... The United States of America and the great public who understands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great hills and rivers.
Mr. Basil, would you call the hall, please? Mr. Basil here, Mrs. Bites.
Here.
Mr. Doby. Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. Rafkin.
Here.
Mr. Speed.
Here.
Ms. Radowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Martino. I don't see it on here on the agenda, but the requirements for public comment are that you come to the podium at the time the public comments called for, sign in, state your name and address, and they'll have three minutes for your comment. If anybody hasn't signed in in the back of the room, please do so before you leave, Under Agenda Edits, all under New Business, there's an Item M, which is to approve the balanced light and sound quote in the amount of $2,550, which is the sound system for graduation. Item N would be to approve the encompass media quote in the amount of $1,175, and that's the video streaming for graduation. Item O is an island pizza fundraising event. And Item P regards the Odyssey of the Mind, where we're going to the next level of competition. So that's the Agenda Edits. The next item on the agenda, as listed as Board President Report, and I actually got this idea from Mr. McKnight, who at the high school was listening to rumors and other things that he decided to address, and I thought it would be a good idea. There have been several rumors, misconceptions, and other erroneous comments made either at the podium or on social media. Tonight, we have a fair-sized crowd. We haven't been getting that. And what's been happening is five or six people come to the meeting, and everybody else is getting their perception of what's taking place from those five or six people, and it reminds me of a game that people of my generation played called Whisper Down the Lane, where somebody would start by saying something into the person next to them, and by the time it got around to the other end of the table, what was said was totally distorted. So I figured, let me say these things for the record. Here's some of the things I've heard, that this board does nothing but cut programs and doesn't care about education. And I want to say that since this board was seated at the end of 2013, we have not cut a single program, and instead incorporated nine additional courses into the high school curriculum, including AP courses in 2014-15, and will add 10 more such courses in 2015-16. The next item is that class sizes are being increased. Increasing class sizes has not so much been mentioned by this board. The suggested maximum class size has been part of the Daniel Boone School District Administrative Guidelines since July of 1988, were last revised in April of 2013, requiring board approval to include classes with less than 10 students enrolled in the class. And all we're doing is ensuring that the suggested class size is very large. The next item was that students will be required to wear uniforms. I have no idea where this came from. This has never even been mentioned since I've been on the board. The established dress code will not ever be reviewed and enforced. The next item, the voices of the public and students are not heard. There's the vast difference between not being heard and not being agreed with. This is my second year as board president, and regardless of title, unless at least four other people, at least four other board members, agree with what I'm saying, my ideas are heard, but they're not enacted. Mr. Basil, who's the longest current, continuous-serving board member and the immediate past president until he gave up the position, also needed the majority of the board to have his ideas enacted. Excuse me. So standing at the podium or writing an email doesn't mean that whatever you're saying is automatically accepted. It takes the majority of the board, regardless of whose idea it is. As for the students, we now have a member of the senior class sitting on the board, a member of the junior class sitting as an alternate, both of whom have the freedom to speak their mind on any given topic. They're just not permitted to vote. Also, please keep in mind that neither the board, the public, nor the students all agree on every issue. In fact, at least two of the items on tonight's agenda were items that were brought to the board's attention by members of the public. I repeatedly hear raise taxes. Individuals who state this are truly speaking only for themselves. Whenever a member of the public stands up and makes that comment, you need to understand we can't just raise taxes on an individual, but rather we need to raise them for all of the more than 20,000 residents of the Daniel Boone Area School District. I don't know anyone's financial circumstances except my own, but I do know there are many people in this district who can't afford more school property tax increases. I also know property taxes in this district vary in range from around $1,000 per year to more than $10,000 per year, and I have to believe it's much easier to absorb a percentage increase on $1,000 than on $10,000. And in case everyone hasn't heard, the governor and both houses of the legislature are working on reducing and eliminating school property taxes, not raising them. Any individual who truly believes their property taxes aren't high enough has the option of voluntary paying an additional amount to the school district. It's all about the kids. I don't know how many times we've heard that. But speaking specifically of school property taxes, now this is important. The mileage from 2003 through 2012 was raised nearly 30 percent in this district. Guess how much, other than having extravagant school buildings, benefited the kids? Zero. Landowners, architects, and contractors made a small fortune, but labor contract salaries and benefits rose to unsustainable levels. But during that same tenure periods, period, programs were cut and activity fees were instituted. Not a dime directly benefited the education of students. Couple more items. Enrollment is declining because of school board or administrative administration decisions. The reality is there are three primary reasons our enrollment's declining. Decline in the birth rate, a recession impacted real estate market, and school property taxes that are already exorbitant. I regularly attend county township supervisor and planning commission meetings, and both groups will openly inform you that those residential and commercial developers look at this area as being an unattractive territory in which to build because of school property taxes that are already too high. Raising taxes even higher would be counterproductive. I've heard we have a balanced budget so we can afford to start spending additional money. Yes, our budget's balanced, but only through 2015-16. After that, our projected fund balance declines by $2 million a year due to rising pension costs, and by 2020, we're looking at a $6 million deficit unless the state does something to correct the Peasars fiasco, or unless the local school board continues to exercise fiduciary responsibility. The only local control we have over Peasars' costs is to reduce the number of people in the pension system, and even that's controlled by the state, demanding that we can only reduce the number of teachers in proportion to declining enrollment. And this last one, and I don't even have it written down because this just came in in an email to me yesterday, was that our voting record should be checked because this board voted to approve the building of the Monocacy School Elementary School at a cost of more than $20 million, and now we want to close it. That building was approved, I believe, in 2004. Not a single person on this board was on the board in 2004. In fact, the local taxpayer group vehemently opposed the building of that building, and also opposed using the same architect that built the middle school, non-competitively to design Monocacy. So this board did not approve a building that it now wants to close. And speaking of closing a building, nothing about that has been decided yet. So that's the Agenda Edits, and that's my report.
Speed Miller, 600 Bridge Drive, at me. Couple of questions.
Is your mic on, Mr. Miller? I'm sorry. If that didn't click, then how it is?
Now it's on. Yeah, sorry about that. Just a couple of questions. You had mentioned class sizes. There's no move to increase class sizes, but there is a guideline. Is that a guideline or suggested class sizes or maximum class sizes?
It's suggested maximum class size.
Suggested maximum class size, not suggested class sizes?
Yes.
Okay. And how does that arrive as far as being the appropriate class sizes?
I really don't know. As I just read to you, that was incorporated before 2013.
Okay. Well, I suggest that we do some research and find what the appropriate class size should be to increase the class sizes, would be my suggestion. Just having some arbitrary size that was created 15, 20 years ago may not be the best way to go.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Officer, I was re-asked, was there any board member comments about what I had to say? Seeing none and seeing no more public comment, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. At this time, I would like to recognize Sarah Soriano. And Sarah, I know that you're here to present your essay for us, but if you just take one moment. Sarah has won both the county and state award for fifth grade entrance of the DAR American History Essay Contest. Her essay has been sent to the next level to represent Pennsylvania at the Eastern Divisional Level. Those results will be announced in March or April 2015. As the PA State winner, the Pennsylvania State Society has invited Sarah and her parents and their guests to the annual Pennsylvania luncheon held in June in Washington, DC. This luncheon occurs during the DAR Continental Congress, held each June in Washington, DC. Sarah will also be recognized, or has been recognized, on March 21st during the DAR Berks County Chapters Meeting. The assignment for this year's contest was, and if you haven't read the paper today, imagine yourself as a child traveling through Ellis Island in 1892. How would you describe your experience to your cousin who has never heard of Ellis Island? Sarah, would you like to present your essay right now for us, please?
Excuse me, of course, you could, yeah, Mrs. Ask.
Absolutely. I'm sorry, I didn't see Mrs. Ask come up. Yep.
You guys are in for a treat tonight. Thank you for letting Sarah come, and very excited.
You covered it wonderfully, so thank you. Also, just to add a couple more pieces of information for those who didn't get to read the paper today. I guess the contest came across your desk, Mr. Miller. So we created a program or a unit to study Ellis Island and mostly the information, and Sarah's grandmother had taken her to Ellis Island this past summer, was it?
Yeah.
So she had a wonderful, real-life experience of Ellis Island, and you were able to research your great-great-grandparents coming through Ellis Island prior, and they provided you with documents that came from Italy, correct? And so she brought in some documents from when they came through, way back when, and shared with the class. So the class also got some firsthand information as well. We read stories, we used our book, we went online, we found lots of information, and thus her essay that's going wonderful places. And we got to go to the DAR, which was so cool.
A child was getting through Ellis Island. Dear Emily, I'm finally in America. The ship docked on a small island with an enormous red brick building and a giant green lady. She was beautiful. I wish she were here, Emily, because I'm going through it all alone. I got off the ship with thousands of people and all their bags in cases, but I had only one bag. There were people in uniforms making hand motions, pointing at the building. I couldn't understand a word they were saying. All I knew was that they weren't speaking Italian. I went in the building because that was where they were pointing. I walked through a door and saw suitcases and trunks as far as I could see. A man pointed at a pile of luggage, so I put my bag down. Right through the building was a big stairway with men leaning us up and men in white coats staring at us. Sometimes these men took people out of line and marked them with a piece of chalk. I wanted to run, but this was the only way to get through. As I walked up the stairs, one of the white-coated men glanced at me, then looked away. I continued up the stairs to one of the biggest and most beautiful rooms I'd ever seen, but the noises were deafening. Hundreds of different words were spoken that I had never heard before. I waited for hours until I got to the front of the wall. Finally there, I continued to another place where I saw a white, even more white-coated men checking people with little tools. Then it was my turn to get checked. The person took a hook and looked under my eyelid. He put a weird necklace on my chest, made a frown, and marked me with an H. Then I remembered that I was born with a heartburner. I made a little shriek as a person put me in a separate line. I didn't know what was going to happen next, but they not allow me through to America, but they sent me back, the chill went down my spine. I was sent to another white-coated man who checked me with even more little fingers. A man who knew my language told me I could go, and that I would grow out of my heartburner. I moved to another room where I sat in a chair. A man was asking me questions, but he didn't speak my language. Another man came in and greeted me. This man was nicer and spoke Italian. He asked me a lot of questions, like, where were you born? Do you have any money? Who is here to pick you up? You know, so many questions, it made my head spin. When we were done, I walked up another set of stairs with three aisles. I moved to a room where they telegraphed my mother and told her that I was ready to be picked up. I was so excited to see her, but she never showed up. I waited, sleeping in cramped rooms, hoping she would come. And finally, after a week, someone told me that she had run. I ran to see her, we kissed and hugged, and I told her all about my adventure. Before we left, I took another look at the green lady. It seemed like she was smiling at me. Then my mother and I went on a ferry to New York. My new life had finally started.
We'd like to present you with the certificate. Congratulations. Job well done.
Mrs. Torsh, wait.
Fifth grade. You certainly are excused if you don't wish to stay for the remainder of the meeting. I also have some more information for some other wonderful students in our school district. It is a hat-trick. For the third year in a row, the Middle School Odyssey of the Mind team, coached by Steph Wimmer and Fran Thompson, won first place in their Problem and Division at the PA State Odyssey of the Mind Competition on Saturday at Berwick School District. The middle school team is eligible to advance to the international competition in Michigan in the end of May. So congratulations to our middle school OM team. The members of that team are Taylor Eisenhoof, David Urillo, Emma Hartman, Zoe Thompson, and Rachel Wimmer. So I had asked Mr. Martino to add some other information under New Business with regard to OM to help move them forward. Our own board alternative, I've been getting updates from a mysterious number that says today at FBLA states, Ellis Sweet was inducted into the National Business Honor Society, Pennsylvania FBLA chapter, and has made it to the second round for the FBLA state. So there's a quick update. And lastly, I would just like to recognize one of our administrators. Shelley McCowsky has been nominated for the 2015 Annie Sullivan Award. The ceremony will be held Wednesday, April 15th, at 5 o'clock at the Berks County Intermediate Unit, where the winner will be announced. So congratulations, Shelley. That completes my report. Thank you very much.
And now the Blazer Foundation report. Mrs. Bites?
The Blazer Foundation. The Blazer Foundation hasn't met since our last report, although they're meeting today now, currently in the bathroom, as opposed to soliciting some ideas, I believe, things that they can do for them.
I can have somebody give you a little brief update, if you'd like. All right. Megan, would you report in for us, please?
We met today. The goal of the meeting was just recently get ideas from the principals, things that we could do in the coming years. We will be looking for additional on the board going forward. The board has welcomed some ideas and had some really great input from principals today on the board. So, I don't know, Matthew, or Goldman, or Tennessee, the way to explore our progress on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber, Mrs. Bites. Any board comment or questions?
I had a question for Mrs. Torsh, if she could just give us a feel for the way that PSSA testing is going. It starts next week, and how the hell things go. The tests are in house?
Right. Tests are in house. The tests do not begin until tomorrow. That will be the first day. We don't usually try to test our students on a Monday. So at this point, they're good to go.
And I saw a video that was produced?
Yes, yes. Mr. Isselman, he had a brainstorm of trying to help the students to shake it off and used Taylor Swift's new song to share with the students and get them motivated to, not to take it so seriously, shake it off, just, you know, try your best. So that was the message.
Did that message go home to parents, or how was that promoted?
I'll allow Mr. Isselman to address the...
We shared the video with our students in the building, and then we posted it on BEC's Facebook page, and Scott Naths, we put it up on the district page the next week or so.
Is there any public comment on the Superintendent's Report?
Mary Temple, Union Township, this is the best place to hire. They ask, Mrs. Torsh. Can I sort to the cafeteria state? Did you formally request that to the incoming school board?
I did not formally request that to the school board. It was part of the negotiations committee that that had been discussed.
It happens, I think. I believe the superintendent of the school has to formally request that.
I know it was a discussion item for our committee, and so, yes, if I was part of that committee, then that certainly came, you know, from me, so it was part of the negotiations committee discussion.
Okay. One more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I and I missed one thing under the announcements. There will be an executive session following this meeting. We're just the nine board members, and we'll hold that in the room in Ibis that was the library to discuss personnel issues. Moving on to Item Six, the Curriculum and Instruction Meeting.
The Curriculum and Instruction Committee will be meeting on April 27, and will be here, and of course, the public is welcome. And please come and hear some of the great things we're going to do in our curriculum in the neighborhood school district.
Any board comment or questions? Public comment or questions?
Speed Miller, can I, I guess this is the appropriate time to ask. I just have a question on an article that was in the paper yesterday with RAC dual enrollment classes. Are we participating in that, or I think it's just mentioned specifically as schools, right?
Yes. We have been discussing doing dual enrollment. It's been part of discussions, and we've been having a little debate about where we can take the high school moving forward. We are not, at this point, in any formal partnership with any college program, and that is certainly something I'd like to do, and I don't want to speak for the committee, but we are waiting for some guidance from our administration on how to make those types of opportunities available to our students.
As described, it sounds quite attractive in other school districts we're doing, actually getting college credits with state colleges, it's supposed to, you know, the advanced placement courses are nice and very good, we're getting in school, but often don't get credits from colleges themselves. Thank you.
Mr. Miller, the article also is in the short.
Just to follow up on that, we have been, the last few years, talking about pushing the BCTC program. They have dual enrollment programs with RAC as well. That matriculated two degrees with Williamsburg and also Penn State. So it has been a topic of interest, and we are pushing it out, and I do know that my daughter graduated in 2013, but she looked at dual enrollment. It wasn't necessarily a school sponsor, but she could take classes at RAC in the afternoon because she only needed English and German, I think, with one other class. So it is a possibility.
Actually, I just want to say that we've been talking about dual enrollment for years now. Five, six, seven years, we've been talking about dual enrollment, particularly through BCTC. And we continually ask the administration to try to promote that with our student body. And we had the president of BCTC come to meet with Bill Happenwell, I believe, at the time, who was the high school principal, see what we've done to make sure that we are effectively promoting the dual programs that BCTC has to offer. So it's been on the agenda, it's been something the schools have been promoting for as long as I've been sitting here on this board.
Moving on to Building and Grounds, Facilities Committee. Mrs. Gass.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. The Facilities Committee met last Thursday. We had a pretty cool agenda. Casey had introduced us to a lot of problems that he's going to be getting proposals on and tries to prioritize them with the LARN and trying to determine which really need priority. But just listing down a few of them, we talked about, and saw pictures of problems with the parking lots, cracks, and seems that they're going to need sealed. High school ductwork insulation repair. There's an issue with the high school ANX electrical panels and lighting issues. We have middle school sidewalk repairs, high school roof repairs. The Monocacy parking lot drainage is still on the agenda, the topic. High school cooling tower needs work. AEC gymnasium lighting needs work. And then some things that were just on as a possibility that we're going to be looking at would be the turf field lines for lacrosse. Right now, they're currently cleaning them two or three times a week. They're looking at doing a cost analysis of how to implement it on as opposed to doing them manually. The district's why the key to smoke rate is still on the agenda and being investigated. And then there was a, one of the athletic bands needed a emergency transmission replacement that went, so that was replaced, I believe. That was already replaced. So. And then we also spoke about the high school security recommendation, and Mr. McKnight gave us an analysis that he had done. I asked Sandy to give you a legal copy of 2016, so he mailed it out to you. But they looked at the three, having security with the three guards that we have, two guards, one and a half guards, one member from the state police, which would be like a school resource officer, and then also a post from another company for security guards. And they gave a list of the different things that the guards do, and the frequencies with which they do those things, and then the cost per hour, the cost per officer, and the cost per year. One of the things with the state police option is that they are currently still doing this program, but they can't say how long that program will be in effect. The other thing is that the officer would still be, or the trooper would still be acting as, you know, as a trooper, so if he would get a call, he would have to leave the school. So the recommendation of the Facilities Committee was to go with two officers So the recommendation of the facilities committee was to go with two officers from MNG, or two security guards from MNG. Mr. McKnight did say that, you know, obviously three would be ideal, but they understand that we are trying to balance that budget and he feels that that two would be an ideal situation for what they need to do. Some of the things that he said were important were their assistance at the parking lot and keeping students where they need to be and out of the parent or the teacher lots, also for the lunchroom duty. And if you look at the alloy rates that they charge, it's obviously less expensive than having a principal or a teacher in those lunchrooms to help kind of keep a presence. So if you have questions, I'm sure you'd be happy to address them as well, but that was the committee talk about.
Yes, I have a question. Just looking over there is, I remember when a gentleman who owns the security named the board said that I believe all of the officer, the personnel have a background in law enforcement. So it didn't really make sense to me how I'm looking at these different options. Option A, the category of law enforcement background is high frequency. B, which is the recommendation, is moderate frequency. And then C is low frequency, where paying would be paying the same cost per hour. How does employing more or equal, having a law experience background of persons?
Well, you'll have more people in-house with a law enforcement background. So if you have three folks there, you have three people in law enforcement. If you have two, you only have two officers.
Okay, well, no matter which option we go with, the people that we will have will have that law.
Yes, one exception is they have interns from Alberta who are in law enforcement, graduating in law enforcement. So they have that level of law enforcement, the others are generally retired from law enforcement as a background.
Okay, thank you.
And the next meeting is May 4th.
I guess, sorry.
That's right.
Any question? What was the story with the cooling tower? The cooling tower's only a couple of years old. Is it comparable to the earlier?
Cooling tower's actually 20 years old in the high school. Life expectancy for a tower is 20 years. We have various areas where the housing of it has corroded. There's one area I could probably fit a small beach ball through it right now where the van blows with more air is coming out of it than going into it. The inside fill looks like a honeycomb. That has, that froze twice on us this winter due to the extreme winter. It's a plastic. Once that ice got in there and started to expand, it just collapses. So about half of, about a third of the infill material is no longer a honeycomb, it's just a big block of plastic pieces that are broken and just, there's no flow. We actually had to reduce the water flow to the tower so it doesn't overflow on underground because it just can't take the flow that it's designed for. Therefore, it can't pass the air. It's designed for, therefore, it doesn't cool down the way it's designed to do. So I have proposals on replacing the infill material and I have waited for another proposal on replacing the tower. Actually, I had the tower record today to look at any other options that we had. There are some other options, but they'll cost a lot more than just going to swap out.
Are you looking at new chiller towers or are you looking at used chiller towers?
New, but there is a possibility of getting one that is used that I actually installed when I had my business. It was only in operation for two years and has been sitting in a crane yard for the last six. So I may be able to get that fairly inexpensive. I found out that was still available this morning.
What size chiller? I may have a resource for you to know as well for...
I don't remember the GPM on that one, to be honest with you. I can find out for you. I don't remember what it is. Somewhere, if memory serves me correctly, what we installed when I had my business, it was around 175 gallon a minute tower. So that's going to get us close on size wise. So it's seen its better days.
I have another question. I was looking at additional considerations and improved videos for mounts and this made it cost $24,000. What improvements would those be in addition to that? I want to know, what is the procedure if a video file needs to be reviewed? When I was at the high school, my understanding was if there was like a volunteer staff member who would do that and I'm just curious if that has changed. So there are my questions.
I'll address it initially, then I'll have Mrs. Weber give some more insight. First thing is that video currently is in a separate room from the high school right now. I mean, not the high school, the high school office. So if we want to see something that's memorial, that's not that we can see in a lifetime. So the upgrades, when we talk to Mr. McKnight, I think, were around $24,000 to come in, speak to the amount. We would have video access on each administrator's desk so we could see things all the time throughout the building, which obviously would help us a great deal to build a creative system. Right now, we're trying to capture video on this road west of the tower.
It's always a good to go back from the view of time. Once you have a window of time, there are a significant number of cameras, so I have to know an area, but I can work my way through the building following the path for the location, depending on where it is. Some places there's great location in it, other times it's very difficult to see kind of on what's clear. But I can look at the cameras based on time and then it's saved until, per security, depending on how much it's recorded. The cameras are actively activated, so if it's overnight, they only activate when they see something or somebody walk by. So it's not like it's just hours of them. Then I can take a clip, I can snip it, email it, it's traditionally what I do, an email to myself listening to Mr. McGregor.
So are you the only administrator who has access to that? Or the only, I don't see administrator, because administration should have access.
Currently, only administrator, myself, Mr. Matts are both the ones who are very proficient with doing it. Again, the other, I can show pretty much how to use it, but we're responsible for the data.
Okay, thank you. That is my question. One more.
Okay.
The existing system is a coax cable based system and we're at capacity of the controller. So if you're looking for expansion in the high school or to improve the cameras to an IP based camera and to make it web based, that's what this upgrade will do. This upgrade replaces the entire front end of the system. So you are able to expand to pretty much whatever you want to do.
So, just to follow up on that, might have thought if I get my... Okay. All right. So is that, we pay a monthly fee right now, so we have to do maintenance on that, is that correct?
We used to.
Okay, yeah, I remember that bill. I wondered why you had, I was told it was, that was that we had to have that?
We had multiple of those contracts. They all have been terminated because I didn't want to keep spending money on an antiquated system if we were going to be doing this upgrade. So I kind of put a halt to all the...
And that was like a thousand a month?
Yeah.
Or something?
Yeah, it was, for the two of them, it was 10.60, 10.50, 10.80, somewhere around the neck of the woods. So...
So that's, this can be sent each month?
Correct. And your cameras are still your cameras. They're currently clear. They currently work the way they're supposed to work, but this is a step in the right direction that is web based. Because technically, if there is an issue, you can go on your phone and bring up that camera on your phone and go to those areas and make sure what you see on the cameras, what actually is there. So it will definitely save time for our administration and staff for our any issues.
Just to follow up, thank you, Mr. Kurtz, for pointing that out on the line because I did kind of forget about that part. The committee did recommend that we consider if we, if the board does go to, that we look at doing those video enhancements if necessary. And I realize that in the first year, you know, we might not really save money, but within the future, those improvements could be important to administration and security.
I don't want to waste any questions here, but I'm wondering how does our system, the high school, the rest of our systems, the other levels are? Is it equally, do they need assistance at those levels too or is it IP based? I mean, this is...
They're all the same. They're all the same. The middle schools, you have a, we have another proposal for the middle school as well, to bring that one up to speed as well.
Could say potentially be realized if we do an entire district at the same time and someone, I don't know if that's just the way.
It's a location based. There's a lot of work in re-IDing all of the cameras currently. They're not even IDing. When you bring up the screen, there's 12 pictures on the screen and if I went in there not knowing the schools yet, I'd have to have somebody from the administration sit next to me and say, okay, this is a 200 hallway, this is a 300 hallway. So they're doing everything. They're coming in and they're going to have a system that anybody can go in and literally with a password and an ID, you'd be able to know what hallway you're going in, what class you're trying to see.
How are emergency response plans in the event of some type of tragedy gone? How often are they reviewed and updated? I know that, I don't know why you're asking that question to the emergency...
Year, fact on year?
I don't know, I do. I'm lying to the answer. Ever year?
Ever year.
Okay. Because I'm thinking if we can identify which hallway and certain cameras are looking at, and outside, individually, we need to look into the building, whether that be the state police or remember, we don't even know which hallways of our activation there. We should be really cognizant of that.
Casey, I have a simple question. Of these items that Mr. Peddaski mentioned, do you have a ballpark figure on all those repairs?
Twenty-five thousand.
Or are you still working on that?
We, look, I think it was about, I think, just my quick estimate was like around 200,000 from that list, so...
I can run down real quick. Cooling tower...
I mean, if that's a ballpark figure, that's fine.
Yeah, it's in that area.
Okay, thank you. Any other board comments or questions? Seeing not any public comment on building the grounds. Moving on to finance, course approvals, or anything to be said about that? Any comments on the financial reports of February and March? Moving down through finance, item, are there any comments on items C through F? Item G...
I have a question. Okay?
Sure.
I have a question about the service legal level agreement with Berks County Intermediate Unit for tax services. Who actually negotiated that? Was that a board thing? Is that, where did that come from? A lot of things in there, like the student data, the collection of student data every 10 years, it gets eliminated, the purge building history. I just wonder where all these purge master schedules, 10 years, that they're keeping our data on their facility? And I was just wondering, is this random or where did this come from?
E F?
No, she's on, yeah, item F. If you're looking at me, but I have...
That would be Mr. Small.
The E-School services.
The tax collection or the East School Plus student information system?
The, right now, I'm looking at the East School Plus.
Okay, that's E.
Is that, was that your involvement?
That's E. That would be Mr. Matts.
Yeah, that's what we made.
So you didn't ask any for E?
The East School Plus agreement, that's standard through the DCIU. There's a consortium of districts that participate in the East School Plus system. Part of it's based on state guidelines as far as how long you have to retain student records. The rest of it is established by the consortium as far as the detention period. So most of it is driven by state record detention requirements for the district as well as being an access for us as well for record back years or transcripts and things like that, exactly what you're requesting.
Great, see that. So who's in the consortium? Who represents us in the consortium, DCIU?
Yeah, yeah, I really look at, I look at it from here.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Mrs. Bates, come on, real quick on that. So, Mr. Matts, we're in the, I just want to understand, so we're in the consortium, but yet, so we're paying the per student price based on our district enrollment, not the entire consortium, is that...
Correct, yeah, it's on the per district base.
So with the consortium, you get that, you get that whole group in there, right? Okay, all right, good.
So on the agreement acceptance page of that, nothing's checkmarked, were we accepting East School Plus application services through the end of '16, '17, is this what?
That's what I assumed.
That's what we're purging here tonight?
Correct.
No, two weeks.
Two weeks, excuse me.
What other systems did the DCIU look at in terms of pricing?
They only provide Sun Guard East School Plus. They don't offer multiple systems. If we were to transition to another system, that would be, we would be leaving the ID for support. There are other systems out there that is a massive overhaul, about three or three years to be transitioned, but primarily mine, representing this tier, recommendations that we can evaluate what other vendors are out there. But there's three major ones, East School Plus, Diver's System is another one, and Power Pool is the other system we'll see in the calendar.
Yeah, I was curious, when was the last time DCIU actually went out and reevaluated the three different systems and got pricing on those different systems?
That's a yearly...
They do it every year? Do they give bids?
I don't know that they have bids, but they do reevaluate each year. They recently reevaluated the specialized software. They, from time to time, they do offer new services. Basically, based off the recommendations from the consortium, I'm sure that they're happy with the service or if other bodies can use it.
Thank you.
I had a question about the Verizon contract. I saw that we have 42 lines total and I was just curious, I don't know if I'm talking here, maybe I can say what they are, but that's a lot. They all, when do we review if that is an appropriate number of lines to add?
Yes, let's, let's interview about Mr. Pollak sort of that, I can do that as well. I can tell you fairly roughly what they represent. Our buildings grounds department, the large interfaces, we're roaming around the, make sure to say I've been the second largest group as well, my department and then the nurses are...
You know, we're, we're a little bit curious, want to see that. Thank you.
I have a question from Mr. Matts. I noticed that in your comments, you said that some, our costs would be higher except that some of our employees are using our end phones for kind of first phase of this list?
Correct.
And what, how many of them, official capacity?
That's about five. They're very, they're employees who love you. Two of them exist in my department. They primarily fit as desk and what is necessary to provide a student with their notes.
I was wondering if the board had any concerns about that?
Then it's, that are not district phones, are we able to get into any system?
Yeah, yeah, these are.
Just administrative members...
Correct, yeah. Administrative members are the only ones that connect in to our email system.
So you're saying just voice communication with that?
Definitely that.
Moving on to the Berks Career and Technology Centers General Fund Propose operating budget.
I had sent that out last month for review and said lately I need questions, so just want to know. I know Mrs. White asked me a couple. I think I got answers to them. I didn't necessarily know them immediately, but I got them because it's a change in term. So, I mean, it is in front of you. We do need to vote on it if you would like the executive director perhaps, not the executive director, we'd be... I can't, Zachary, if you'd end this session, would come out and then present it to you if you had any questions or if you're comfortable with it, we can screw it up the next meeting.
I have two questions. On page eight, do you remember district... On page eight, do you remember district proportion and share calculation?
Okay.
What do they mean?
Oh, let me see what's in there. They, that's, okay, is it, they, okay, what they do is they take a three-year average of, of the students that you sent, and then they figure out what percentage of budget your school district did, or what percentage of the total your school district is, and then that's the percentage of the budget that you pay for that year.
So this is based on the number of students we have to go there?
Correct.
Okay, and on page nine, I, I'm assuming that's based on the same thing, because our cost under the 2015-16 member district is, is the fourth highest increase on the page?
Correct. We also have a, if you look at the amount of students...
We went up.
We went from nine and four to 110. So we actually went up, I think, and I think I sent that out in the email, I think it was what, 15% student increase, but a 7% wasn't increased. Now you'll see that for the next couple of years, because potentially, if our enrollment stays that high, but, correct, it's a three-year average.
It's more than that, it's also based on the capacity of the building and the number of students that are occupied. And that, what I can do, I'll, I'll send around to everyone, because I had a very detailed, very detailed, um, description of how they come up with that, because when I first got on the DC, TC, that's, I asked them, how do you report these costs from, how, what are the cost drivers to get there? So I had documented that, so I'll forward that off to the board, I don't have like, my zip drive with me, I can pull that, but I'll forward that off to you, it's actually very, very detailed, so you know where the cost is.
I, I can't find it this minute, oh, here, there's 74, 7,400 cost per student, so it's actually like a very good value anyway, I think, for what the kids are doing in that area. I think for what they're getting, I mean, for what they're getting, obviously, you know, they have a...
It's phenomenal, the food was good.
We want 90 students, or 98% of kids in the area that go on to college, have a job, are on the military.
Plus, plus the technical academy that they have, the ability to get into, which is where...
Yeah, I think it's a deal.
You can graduate with, I forget, 20, like 20 some credits before you graduate, then start your dissertation.
And pay for my school, really.
Right.
You know, I mean, so...
And our average to educate them in-house is what, 13 or something, did I see? 14? So, it's a good deal, they're walking away with good solid skills and outstanding...
I'd like to say too, and it's interesting, obviously, a lot of the kids that get sent to Bo-Tech, probably the principal's have IEPs or, yeah, have difficulty learning. Daniel Boone, actually, I think only 3% of the kids got MSA to do, and it was one of the lowest out of all the school districts as far as students with IEPs. So I, you know, I think that that's good as well, because you have students that do whatever they want.
What's that?
Only get half a day, thankfully.
Right, but it's a half a day, but...
Good point, good point.
I might, I, I only ask the question because I don't understand the calculation.
Like, I, I don't have that, what Mike said, but I used to know the general ally to, but he has that, sent it out.
Yeah, for him, yeah.
Um, and they did, um, I know that, I don't know if it went out to everybody, but I know Mrs. Bush had, had sent it to me, but at the last meeting, they did, um, Dr. Lee's is retiring at the end of the year, and they did, uh, we did appoint, um, Dr. Kraft, who was one of the, the principals, I, I don't think they call them principals, but Director of Instruction or whatever, but he, he was, has been named as the, the new person.
Thank you. I think mine on the agenda would be to accept the following donations, uh, from the David L. Blackwood Memorial Girls Basketball Fund, the Laser Foundation, there are three monetary donations from the Laser Foundation, and also a donation from the Berks County Community Action Program. So each of those, we'll, we'll discuss the amount and vote on them at the next meeting. Any comments or questions about those donations? Moving on to item J, the high school and middle school staffing discussion, and this came up in the finance committee meeting, and I, I know Mr. Basil had asked the administration for a bare bones staffing presentation.
I think the question I have is, before we get into any kind of presentation, again, a lot of questions as it relates to the information that's provided to the board, both in terms of the numbers that are being presented for enrollments and the number of faculty, um, that don't correlate with any of the information I've received over the last seven years. I, I, I don't know how to make a comparison between the data that's in here and the data that we've received for third-day enrollment. So I don't know if the numbers are coming from a different source, or they're being taken from a different time period, or the data that I've been given previously is all erroneous, erroneous, I, I don't know. So it's, it's, I think this really needs to be talked about in curriculum instruction, so we have a better understanding of the numbers we have somehow correlate to the numbers that have been presented in the past. I don't know what to say, but other than that, I mean, I'm looking at these things and we've got staffing at, at certain numbers here, 50 or 60 or 58 people, and, and the numbers I've received in the past were 69, 73, and 75. It's a huge disparity between the two. Enrollment numbers don't line up with the enrollment numbers that we've had over the last, how many years, that were pulling from, you know, September third-day enrollment, compared to the number of students that are being represented here in these, in these charts. So, I don't know, I don't, I'm concerned about a discussion taking forth on these ratios and everything else, but I want to make it clear that the underlying baseline data is, is in alignment with what we presented in the past. So I'd just like to get some clarification on that before we start throwing these things out in the public for consumption.
Did you want to respond, Preston, as to your members?
Do you have a specific question, and I'll reply to the answer?
Well, it's hard to have a specific question. I mean, if you look at the, some of the information presented related to the high school, um, and the number of faculty at the high school over a period of time versus the number of students, we just put online a, you know, the enrollment numbers from the, going back to 1999, and those enrollment numbers don't correspond with the enrollment numbers that I see here in these, in these Word documents and the, and the PDF document that we see as it related to both the middle school and the high school. So I...
Okay.
I'm just, you know what I mean, I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same dataset and then making good comparisons, that's all. I noticed that some of the guys picked the 20-mile radius for school, the comparison of school districts, but at the middle school level, there are certain school districts that are being represented that aren't represented at the high school level, and vice versa.
Okay, well, I'll speak to the high school.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I'm just, you know, it would seem to me that we'd want to look, make sure that both of those datasets are aligned, and then, then bring those things out, so.
So let me, let me give you a couple pieces of information. So the, the one piece that you have is the United States Department of Education, and those are the enrollments in the United States, and that, that's as good as it gets. Now, that's, it's lagging data, because you can only get it from a year after. When you look at the one chart that compares this to 20-mile radius, 37 high schools, that's one-year lagging data, which I noted in it. In addition, then, if you go to this current set of data, we gave you real-time data, which was this past week, so could it be different from the, the third-day score enrollment? For sure, it could be. Our current high school enrollment, 1,133 as of this...
Yeah, I think we may be talking past each other, so I think the, the question I had was, the data you quoted from the US Department of Education or whatever, doesn't seem to line up where we typically pick our enrollment data from. And I don't know, I mean, is that data that they, that we submit to the US Department of Education, is that May's enrollment data, or is it the third enrollment day in September of every single year?
Generally, that October 1st date. So is this, is the formal date set for, for data in schools before transience moves in and moves out?
I see.
That, that's traditionally your formal date for enrollment.
Okay, well, that could explain some of the variance. And then in terms of the professional staffing and stuff of that nature, I, again, it was something that we, we've been collecting this data for a while, so I'm not sure how the, the number of professional staff, there's such a large discrepancy between the two numbers.
The discrepancy based on disaggregation of special ed staff, since we have no control of the special ed staffing model, is based, those pieces are set in stone by PDs and public municipal casting. We can't affect that number. So generally speaking, best, you could student-teacher ratios, disaggregate special ed teaching population, and you look at your staff, total number of teachers minus the special ed teachers, and you take that against the enrollment, and that's how you end up with your, you know, 19 to 1, 21 to 1, whatever you have to have.
What would you say the number of special education teachers would be?
It's 11.
11?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so, I mean, some of the data, I saw, I see variance of like 25, which seems like a lot. I don't get the middle school now, where I think you even have more special education teachers, maybe not, than you would at the high school. But, um, I, I would like to see some sort of discussion as to where the data's coming from and, and how we're putting it together, and how that compares to the information that the board has received in the past, so that we're at least looking at the same numbers and we're all on the same page, and then if we can agree on what the numbers are, then roll them out. I don't know if we could do that in the curriculum instruction meeting by the end of the month?
Uh, sure, I'll put it on the agenda, let the administration to help us with that.
Be fabulous.
Thank you.
Mr. McKnight, before we move on to the middle school, let me, let me ask you a couple questions.
Sure.
Given you the benefit of the doubt that the presentation you, you made to the board on, on your comprehensive plan...
Yes.
That, that you thoroughly vetted it before you presented it.
I did.
The first presentation was to me and Mr. Currits as board president and vice president.
Correct.
And you showed us three scenarios, option A, option B, option C.
Is that on schedule time?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and you specifically said that you recommended option B as the best option, best practice option for education. Well, then you made the same presentation to the correction committee, that's recorded.
Okay.
And you again said option B.
Correct.
And then you made the same presentation to the entire board, and again said option B, and the board approved that presentation. And that presentation included a final period of 21 minutes.
I believe it was 24, we didn't... It could be 21.
I believe it was 21, but I will quibble about three minutes. But I understand now the last period is 42 minutes.
Correct.
Who approved it?
I had to make corrections to fit the schedule and students had it.
The board approved the presentation you made, and my question is, I guess my statement is nobody approved to change, did they?
I think that the approval of the board was to go forward and continue on with investigating three levels and that schedule. And I investigated that more information came to me, I had to make adjustments, teachers informed me of a few things, and I also gathered information from students. And your question is, did I vet? Well, yes, I did vet it, but I don't know everything, and I'm open to information. Teachers and students increased my knowledge on a few things that needed to be accounted for in that time, and so I made that, that adjustment, and that's...
My, my question is, then, what, what did they bring to your attention? They now cut each class by about three minutes and increased the last period by 21 minutes?
The, there are students in the system who I did not appreciate that would take eight classes their senior year. When I reflected upon their need to take eight classes, or that they have eight classes in their schedule, and had made plans based, most of these are senior students, and, and some juniors who are high performing academic students, when they shared that information with me, I felt in good conscience, I had to be able to support that piece of opportunity for them going forward. So upon further reflection, after they shared that with me, it also brought more crystallization to the amount of time kids would really have to study in that time, or do internships, or go do volunteer, things like that. So that became a more appropriate amount of time to go back to the 42-minute piece where it was, the best practice piece wasn't about whether it was eight periods or nine periods or 42 minutes and so forth, that, that did have to do with the construction, that had to do with the desire to put the ninth period in place for activity period. The best practice piece that we recommended, including that in the two presentation, is about three levels, and the research is solid and strong on less level, less than five levels certainly, so that's where my recommendation came from.
All right, I think, I think I'll have to go back to the, the tape for that, that meeting and see what we actually approved, because I thought we approved what you had presented, not, not approved just going forward and changing it. Let me, let me change the discussion to the 30-some classes with less than 10 students. Now, we've, we've been asking for a bare bones budget, we have not approved 34 or 36 classes with less than 10. And yet, we haven't had a proposal to come up with a number of teachers that, that would tend to change.
I have it for you right now, if I could see it. I, I did give you this, this weekend in the preview package, um, those 34 sections, at no time did I say would equate this to six cuts or this many cuts or that many cuts. What I said was, three levels would reduce the occurrence of less than 10 students, as we've begun to develop the master schedule, Miss Weber, it has done exactly that clear down right now, and we're probably around 80% between enrollment, and we only have 17 current possibilities of less than 10 would, as we finish having 20, I suspect, somewhere around 12 or 13, and I'll have a packet of readable who would disapprove at that time. It was about right sizing, and I think I used that term, right sizing the schedule and right sizing the staff in the schedule. There are 202 students in those 30, it's actually 34 classes. Those students will not disappear, they will have to be taught something. Enrolling those students into, let, let's say that you didn't approve any of those 34 classes, we'd roll those students into courses elsewhere. Enrolling the students into those courses, they're going to create additional sections that have to be picked up. Of the teachers that we have teaching in those courses, roughly 14 of the teachers have volunteered to teach a seventh period. Okay, so they're not teaching a light schedule, they've volunteered to go above, four of the, so additional for 18, a total of 18 now, are teaching six or more classes. So some of those are, are going above and beyond, and better to have teachers teaching students than doing a duty that's not necessary just to cover their schedule. There, the remaining 16, I would say there are three that could experience possible reduction from their current schedule in status, if that's the direction that the board chose to go to. The others, though they're loaded with their life, it's music-based, and they do sections. We can reconfigure the model, how we approach music, but that's currently where those sections are. In total, I would say we're at about 14 sections of students, which would be about two teachers in reduction. So when we go into bare bones, there's a whole host of things we can do bare bones. My point, you know, I set the packet out, is that all those things will have ramifications, and I think it's important that collectively we discuss those ramifications, so we make the best decision possible. I don't think anybody here has the interest of going after the chainsaw, but more a scalpel, make the best decisions that create at least amount of educational deficit or impact in the negative way for students.
All right, I hear all that, keep this in mind. You have 34 classes, now, you have 34 teachers, teaching 34 classes. Now you're saying you have 14, so I, I didn't understand, I didn't follow your numbers, but the fact is, those classes have not yet been approved.
Correct.
And they never should have been taking place. So you're saying out of those 34 classes, those 202 students, yes, they would have to go somewhere, they don't necessarily have to create 202 students' worth of additional classes of... So you're saying out of what is at least four positions, you're saying you could probably come up with two, is that what I heard?
Um, I'm not sure what, why, why you're saying four, but yeah, I'm saying that there's two that could be part out there, and then other things that we would look at.
I said four based on 34 classes divided by eight periods, if that...
Okay, that's, that math wouldn't work that way, okay? Because these...
It may not work that way for total position, but it might work that way for full-time equipment.
Well, and, and we looked at that issue, and because, and as I understood and been informed, that there had been agreements previously, that most of these positions, if you would take them down, you're on point eight four, okay, and you'd have to go down to point seven. So that, that piece is certainly, we met with Mr. Small today to look at that issue again. I think he understands that number, he may be able, better be able to articulate against the previous agreements, but with, with most of these folks are teaching a plus one, about half, or even to the number, and as I said, you're looking at... you're looking at, right, seven are teaching about five-point-four of their course load, which takes an over eighty, eighty percent number, if not seven.
Well, what we'd like to see is if you eliminate these thirty-four classes.
Right.
What that leaves them with, and that's what we haven't seen yet.
Well, you can't know that until, I mean, totally, I didn't create this, and the model that we'll create, we'll submit to students, we think would be far less, I can't speak for why this is created this way, I wasn't here then, and I'm not going to own that decision. What I will own is the decision to work forward, and that will not be happening in the future, and you will have submission, so.
Please have all that by this curriculum instruction committee coming up, because this budget has to be finalized very soon. Let me ask you a couple of other questions. Two years ago, the board at that time, which many of us were on the board, talked about eliminating either a psychologist or a guidance counselor. And Dr. Otto, I believe, agreed that a guidance counselor could be done away with, but after discussion, neither was eliminated, and yet we've lost two hundred more students approximately since then. I'd like you to look at the number of psychologists slash guidance counselors, even though the psychologists are going to understand impact that our special ed and our legal need, so I guess the, well, this is not just the high school, this would be the overall administration to look at the number of guidance counselors. Back to the high school for a second, though, we had, Mr. Kirks and I, and I believe Mrs. Bytes was involved in the discussion, suggested to your predecessor that we use the middle school cafeteria for a study hall. And instead of having a teacher for every twenty kids in the study hall, that we have a larger study hall with a higher ratio of students and teachers. And that was never done either. So we'd like you to look at that. And someone else had proposed to me, and I have no idea how this would work, but, Mrs. Toria, if you would look at the ramifications of if we had the middle school assistant principal shared with the high school assistant principal position that's vacant, so that we had two people doing the work of where there's now three. Mr. Rattrick? I have a simple question for you. I keep reading that you are a team concept school.
Yes.
Our fourth and fifth graders, the suggested class sizes are twenty-four to twenty-six. If Mrs. Toria tomorrow told you to up your teams to twenty-four to twenty-six, what would that do to your staffing?
It actually would leave it exactly the same. My core classes range anywhere from, the average is twenty-two to twenty-six. Language arts and math, the class sizes are a little bit smaller, because some students are pulled, because they have direct instruction math and language arts. But right now, currently, in fifth grade, there are twelve fifth grade classes, I have twelve sixth grade classes. So that change would not, you wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a change being made, they're just simply going to go from where they are now to where they are in sixth grade.
For the curriculum meeting that Mr. Kirks is going to have, could you show us your daily schedule of every teacher in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and how many children are in each class?
Absolutely.
Please. Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on high school and middle school staffing?
Yes, I have a question from Mr. McKnight. In your response, I believe, to Richard's question, you said that some teachers follow the tiers, teach seven classes, can you just give me a little background into how that works? How many classes does the average teacher teach? I'm thinking contractually, I'm just collecting things, so if you could just give me a little bit.
Sure. So basically, we're a sixth prep or a sixth course per teacher with their lunch, their duty, and their prep through, that gives you your nine duties. Because of the lab situation, some teachers teach five-point-eight-three, because of the one-point-one-seven overhang. So there's a few nuances that happen in the schedule. The teachers who, when I say volunteer, which means that we took them out of the duty, or previous measures took them out of the duty and allowed them to teach the extra course.
Can you do some examples of duties, ideally study hall, cafeteria?
Cafeteria, study hall, whatever. Yeah, ISS coverage, when teachers go home, you know, we pull out ISS to cover other classes, you know, obviously prefer not to send students into the study hall, sometimes we have to do that.
Lunch duty, cafeteria, ISS. People who do practice, there's people who do lunch duty. There are.
Study halls.
Yeah, the study halls are big ones. Primarily where we are.
Thank you. So when the.
Oh, lunch detention.
Okay, thank you. So when, if a teacher volunteers to teach another class, how is that duty covered? There's just, there's fewer duties and there are teachers?
Right, we just have less people available to do, give duties. We have, our teacher schedules are not, there's not a lot of duty coverage in there, the ones we have are the essentials, and then we have a lot of people teaching, you know, full schedules for sure or more.
Was when I'm asked really, because, I mean, we have this challenge, that hey, you just ask the premium, or it should be in the classroom, it's hard.
Yes, I mean, the challenge for teacher teaching seven is obviously additional level courses usually, because it'll be something unique usually, so we can offer our students the full breadth of any encore program. And one prep day, obviously, it's not, it's not a lot of time to prepare all that.
Going back to Richard's point earlier, we work to consolidate some study halls and refer their value of the duties, because that's just kind of the teacher to take from monitoring a study hall, they can be in the classroom teaching at no cost.
That's true, well, unless you consider reduction, the added cost, which it is, if you do those things, you can reduce.
Stop talking about the study hall. We would be, we would be, would they just transform a teacher from sitting in a study hall monitoring students, teaching?
Correct.
Would it be, you could do that.
If I'm going to, you would like to know.
Okay.
Library coverage, gift class coverage, study hall in school, lunch duty, lunch detention, park and head, there's a student assistance program, gifted, student union.
Mrs. Weber, for the same curriculum meeting, could you add a list of all the duties? And every teacher, which ones cover which duties, and which ones don't have any duties to cover?
Correct, if they do not have a duty to cover, then they aren't teaching.
List that for us, please, thank you. Mr. Kirks, you have anything else?
Yeah, nothing, Mr. Martino. So, I know this, you know, the right sizing of the classes to get this new schedule in place, and here's the study hall, etc., is kind of the line, like the beginning page?
Yes.
So how would, I mean, if I understood your presentation correctly, you were kind of guiding the high school to have some kind of pants, so that trying to engage all the students, you know, in a positive fashion, to cover the attachment, to try and get them. So if we're going to recommend cuts, how would that affect that?
Well, if the model, in the sense that if you reduce staff ultimately, and I know this conversation has kind of gone around with us a little bit, that we don't want to cut program, but if we reduce staff, because the uniqueness of a high school situation where you have all these single courses, you're going to, we're going to lose something. If we reduce staff, we're going to lose some opportunities, and that's going to happen. So it's going to impact, and currently, right now, we have not designed the pathways, we engage departments, the department chair, leads, and that's really the work for next fall, to come back, design and see where the current courses are that we offer are in play. I know, we also had a couple of conversations on what does it actually cost bringing a new course on, so disaggregated that part of course as well, which, every course has a cost, and every AP course has a cost. So even though we may have folks on staff, the actual cost is certain enough to run that program. So we'll share all those pieces in terms of the pathways, if we add courses, and what is the actual cost to us as a district, as we disaggregate that, makes it, but cuts, cuts one, that's for sure.
I mean, I like that vision, and I hate to see us, you know, kind of cut it off before we even get on the ground, so, just curious.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm with this thing. So it sounds to me like, Mr. McKnight, as if we are able, I guess where I was going with this was having a better understanding and being able to quantify what the cost would be of bringing back or offering a different type of class, whether it's AP or is a different type of course offering altogether. And if you're telling me that you, it sounds to me like you have been able to quantify based on course loads that any particular teacher is working, whether or not that teacher, if you're not having them do one of these thirty-six portion courses, what the overall percentage of time is that they would actually be working, and therefore, if you offered a new course, you'd be able to then quantify what that additional cost would be.
Approximately, yes.
Yes.
Depending on the teacher where they are on the scale and so forth, I guess.
Right, okay. So I think that's important, and I think that's helpful information for us as a board to know, so thank you for going along in that direction. Is there a way then, you, I guess, how are you guys going to present that in some sort of Excel spreadsheet, in terms of total number of teachers, and here's what they're working, and here's what the capacity would be, and then the cost of moving them from, let's say you said point eight-four to a hundred percent, or maybe that's not a realistic goal, but point nine or whatever it might be?
I can do it in Excel. What I did, I didn't understand the bare bones piece until the weekend.
Yeah.
I didn't really have a fair, just a fair piece of what we were really trying to get in addition to the original piece. So I was able to do some of that work over the weekend and get that, you know, kind of cleared up. So right now, I can give you the ten thousand view of what a course costs. If we want to get the one thousand view of what a course costs, then we'll get into specificity of feature.
Right.
Most of my target would be off the dead center part of the teacher's scale, which is step eight and master's equivalent. So right in the middle there is a salary number that's fractionalized, plus the tax charge per student, apply involvement, and you have your number.
Okay.
That was the ballpark that Mr. Small had said that he was using as well, correct, Lauren, the ballpark of the middle?
I actually took the aggregate of all salaries and divided by the number of teachers, which should be twelve.
So getting back to the different plans that you had sort of presented to the different committees, and then to public and the board, I guess I'm confused as to where we are now. And I don't know whether you'll be providing the board with some sort of update of, here's the new model, and.
I can really do this, a pre-episode, I'll just simply give you a pre-episode that is, it's essentially the timing of the current schedule, with the activity running in that ninth period, to build up the maximum opportunities, so, but I'll gladly share that.
Okay, and then as you guys are evaluating these smaller classes, these ten and under type of courses, and I think you said you were able to kind of write it down from thirty-four to seventeen.
That's where we are today.
Okay, is that based on just student desire?
Yes.
Okay.
Complete student desire, which may lead to, you know, full call later in summer, it hasn't passed, to say this course is not on the line, we're also looking at running, you know, courses on a two-year cycle, there's a couple other options that we can look at to really, you know, continue to shrink that number.
Okay. Are there any other considerations, or is it just student desire for a particular course?
Well, there's prerequisites, I mean, right now, which we're also visiting, right now, the term prerequisites, general for courses, and this is a generalization, but it's a certain grade, and then occasionally teach recommendations, we're building out multi-data point piece for prerequisites, standardizing the grading practice by department. For example, right now, as I've met with teachers and department leads, that if you and I teach the same course, my eighty-five may be different than your eighty-five, so or the course is answered, there's not a clear, seventy percent of people come for a test, twenty percent will come from projects, and ten percent will come from home, so we're getting more, having the conversation become more uniform in that practice, and from at least that for next year.
Is faculty availability also a consideration in terms of the course offerings?
For sure, I mean, yes.
Okay, so I guess where I was going with it was, I just know when I was in business school, that certain courses weren't offered.
Right.
You want to take them, they're part of the curriculum, but, you know, the faculty just wasn't available, or there wasn't enough interest, so there were a lot of variables that led into whether or not a course was actually being presented for the students to take.
Generally speaking, our staff has been very amenable to developing courses and getting involved if there's a want for it.
Right.
But that's, when we talk about running these, some of these courses on a two-year cycle, for example, AP European history, right now, it's going to be very close to that course, runs based on the under ten number, so we may pull it this year, but it's running off again, you know, in a two-year cycle. And that's common, you know, for those of us who went through school, you're not always able to get college courses in that semester sometimes, it's two semesters, you have this in plan. We wanted to have these things run in two-year cycles for sure, so a student can get them at least in their junior or senior year as they look through the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on, Mr. Basler, we're going to give the finance committee report.
Sure, I poured around to the board of the topics of discussion that we had, finance committee, I'll give a quick synopsis here for the benefit of the public as well. Under old business, we discussed food services, and in a nutshell, just to recap, currently the contract is out the bid, April twenty-third is the scheduled walkthrough, April thirtieth is the bid deadline. We did ask for an update on the school district SEDEXO contract disagreement, and we really haven't had any more recent updates. And the committee had suggested to the business office to follow up with our solicitor, creating a timeline that would force some kind of response from SEDEXO to our concerns, that if none was forthcoming, basically make a recommendation for next steps, you know, then that litigation, and, you know, litigation would be one of those alternative wars. Under new business, we had this discussion about a bare bones budget based on the conversation we had at the voting meeting, and essentially, the directive that came out of that conversation was that the superintendent business manager were to sit down, work with the middle school and high school principals, provide the board with statistics as it related to this excess capacity, and quantify the cost of bringing those employees back to like, let's say, full-time employee status, so we understand the true cost associated with getting a course offering or a new course. So it sounds to me like we're on our way there, and so hopefully we'll have that information by the time we have the next finance committee meeting. We also, let's see here, pretty much says the same thing. Build enclosure schedule, not much work had been done on that in the last month. One of the directions then was to the administration to provide a functional capacity number, the finance committee at the next meeting, one of the discussions we had had during the presentation, the last finance committee meeting was that we're dealing with numbers as it relates to capacity of buildings, and an architect may have come up with, but then there's the reality of what a functional capacity might be for a particular building, and so the administration is going to work on providing those numbers by the time we have the next finance committee meeting. Additionally, the administration was going to look into other schools that have different models in terms of programming, let's say a five-through-eight middle school program, versus what we currently offer. Other suggestions have been made, like junior high-type models, some other things have been kicked around, so we had asked the administration to basically sit down, take a look at what's being forecast for declining enrollment, and come up with a plan of how you would address that, that best meets the educational needs of students. And if we don't have to reinvent the wheel, and other school districts have some programming out there that works for them, then let's see what those programs offer, and if we could have them provide us the pros and cons of each of those types of programs for us to evaluate, that'd be something that we'd like to see. We turned around and also moved on to kindergarten, and talked about the cost of kindergarten, what would the cost be to bring the fully kindergarten program back? Essentially, what we found out was that it would require a hire of five new teaching positions, along with pension and healthcare benefits, and looking at prior enrollments and the current busing of kindergarten students to immaculate conception, it was estimated full day K would bring an additional twenty, twenty-five students, and the school district would acquire an additional sixth teacher hire, would also require an additional bus, and the total cost of the district in first year would be an additional five hundred thousand dollars. Would also require additional bus and total cost of the district in first year would be an additional $500,000. And that number would increase approximately each year, about $25,000 or more. So one of the things we had asked the administration to do at that point in time was to make corrections to the spreadsheet that we had that demonstrated what these costs were and then send those copies around to all the different board members so you can see it. If you had comments on it, great. And then the recommendation from the finance committee to the board would be to post those costs on the district website so the public could see them as well. Under transportation, we had some questions about a midday bus run in terms of additional costs not being reflected in the contract. The transportation contractors acknowledged that. And what we decided we need to do is have a sit-down with the transportation providers through the transportation committee. So I was the chair of that committee and I'm going to be contacting other board members that are members of that and we'll schedule a meeting with our transportation partners and the business management, see if we can get to some sort of resolution to that issue. Last but not least, we talked about reverse engineering, the predictive enrollment model and presenting it in a manner to be easy to understand. When we last left it, there were some complications in terms of looking at it on a year-by-year basis because each year provided a different forecast. Statistically, I think we can make that model work. And I think Mr. Small was going to look into that and if need be, let us know if he needed additional assistance with creating that model so that we can present that in a visual format that would be easy enough for everybody to understand. And I think that's about it. So I think the only recommendation from the finance committee to the board to consider at this point would be the review of the kindergarten cost. And if there's no questions or concerns about the numbers that the business office put together, then be posting that on the district website for the public to view. If I'm mistaken, maybe anybody else?
No, it's just, I mean, I guess we're, I don't know if we're of a different perspective or not, but I know Mr. Martino's pointing that, because there is a cost of course associated with kindergarten. But I think it's disingenuous to present to the public as an extra cost. It's just that we have the teachers to do it. But we would not be able to cut those teachers if we had to give full day kindergarten back. So I know we look at it at a different size there, I guess, but that's a little clarification for everybody there. So the public's clear that we have teachers to do it. It's just that we won't be able to cut those teachers if we, you know, if we stated.
Do you have any idea when the next finance committee meeting? I was going to pool the finance committee members at this meeting to see what we can schedule a time that works best for everybody.
I have a question, the finance committee. I'm familiar with a, actually partial to a report that I use in looking at businesses, business studies, a budget to actual. Do we compile that record in the district or is this something I've just overlooked? Is it something that finance has 32 where you document exactly how close you are month-to-month to the budget that was proposed?
We do have a, those numbers are presented to the board on a monthly basis.
What's the report called? Is that called a budget?
It's our budget document, so what the actual costs are.
From a general fund?
I believe that's what it's called.
It goes month-to-month and then year-to-date? I'm just not seeing that. Thank you. That would be great, thanks.
It's posted on the board document.
Yeah, actually what I didn't do with that is I like to take the numbers from that and actually enter it into the model that I created so I can see how we're doing month-to-month and year-to-date. And then compare that to prior years to see as a percentage of the entire budget. Are we in tune with the cyclical spending that we typically have or is one month higher or lower?
That's what I'm seeing. You and I compile a lot of our own reports. Can we have the finance committee maybe consider having our administration?
Yeah, well, the finance, I'm sorry, the business administration usually prepares, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Small, what's typically required in a format that's compatible with PDE in terms of what they're reporting in terms of our budget. I always found that to be very difficult for most people to understand. And so I would take the same data and just put it in a different format that I thought was easier for most people to understand. In the past, there was always some sort of suspicion amongst board members when we didn't have such a cohesive board, where people suspected that people were playing with numbers. So I wouldn't use that for dissemination with the board, just because I just kept it to myself. But I'm happy to share the models that I have with anybody who would like to see them. And if it's a model the business office wants to adopt because they think it's going to make, provide more clarity to the public, then I'm all for it, providing that.
That's what I'm requesting here, that the finance committee considers directing our administrations to produce those kind of reports and make them public so that our public is aware. Some basic, you know, business model, but the model that we're following and how well we're doing on it or not.
Yeah, I think the problem we always had was the data we would get from the business office in the past would show us what percentage of the budget we had spent to date out total. But that doesn't tell you really how you're doing, right? It just says you spent 70% of your budget. And was that a good thing or is it a bad thing? Well, only if you can compare it to, traditionally, you only spend 60% of your budget at a certain point in time of the year. Then that would be a bad thing if you had spent 70%, right? Or if you spent, I don't know, 50% of your budget and traditionally you'd spend 60%, then that'd be a good thing. You're under budget theoretically. So unfortunately, that's not the way the data is typically presented. So nobody really knows whether you're doing well or doing poorly unless the business manager takes a deeper dive into that data and say, yeah, look, it looks like we're on track for our budget.
And that's not suggesting that you consider directing the business office to do that. That's all.
Absolutely.
Are there any other comments or questions on finance? Any public comments or questions on finance? Mr. Temple, let me shut them all off and then we'll restart the whole.
I got it. It's all down. Contracts, it is, for the food service. Was it advertised in the newspaper? But. I bought papers.
The Reading Eagle and the Morning Call, it was three times each paper.
Reading Eagle, safer.
Reading Eagle, Morning Call.
Safe for the table.
The Reading Eagle and the Morning Call, Mr. Small directed me to advertise it three times, one per week for three weeks.
Yes, three weeks.
I'm sorry?
Like one week's for a week.
I believe it'd be this week, last week and next week. I don't recall the exact dates. I'd have to pull my file. Sorry.
Also, I understand on the 20th, by the way, Mr. Beasley, I think you had a wrong 23rd. They're going to tour the 20th Tuesday. We're going to have a lot of people come into our buildings. It's going to be after hours. Or is it going to be during the school? The people that's going to tour the cafeterias to.
It will be any of the, of the bitters with Mr. Miller and myself, of the kitchen cafeteria facilities, but they won't be just wandering the room.
I don't care where they're going to be in the building. Students are still going to be in the building. Are they all, are they all police record checked? Are they all going to be police record checked?
That's when they won't need to be police checked because they'll be escorted throughout the building.
Pardon?
They'll be escorted throughout the building.
Well, I still think they all should be police record checked.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone coming into school like that.
They'll be escorted and that will be sufficient.
That'll be sufficient.
Yes.
We're talking about security and that's what we're speaking. Okay, right.
Laurel Green, 367, I'm headline. Mr. McKnight, I was wondering if you could clarify, I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. You were talking about 34 classes with less than 10, you've got it down 17. I think you mentioned music. So in that number, is that including the music chorus ensembles and the band sectionals?
Last year's schedule was 34, it was seven, seven of the courses were music. Okay, they were not the sectional, okay, pieces, okay? The choir, the.
Not chorus and concert choir and Quran.
Right.
But the ensemble sectionals?
That does not count in this number. That's why, so when their number's on the, which is what I said earlier, their number's not on there. It's, they're teaching the, they teach you just section, plus doing sectionals. So their schedule actually appears to be light, but it's not.
Correct. That's what I wanted to verify was.
Now, we can look at how, you know, as a group, we can look at what's the best way to deliver music sectionals, things like that. That can be a conversation that I need to be educated on and tell, but this is the way the model currently is.
Because the purpose of the sectionals and ensembles is to keep them small for small group instruction versus the 80 children or students altogether. So I just wanted to make sure those, if those were right there. Also, Mr. Martino, you had touched on some of the rumors that were out there. I think some of the rumors may come about because there's been no budget presented to the public yet. And I've come to school board meetings for a long time. I don't recall it ever being April and there's still not being some sort of proposed budget out there for the public.
We've looked at the budget since, and it's been discussed at every single finance committee meeting since November.
I understand that. I haven't been able to attend those meetings because of being involved in other things. I'm just curious.
All you need to do is ask and we can produce it.
Typically, in the past years, there has been a formal presentation of the proposed budget. Is there going to be another one of those this year? Or do we need to wait until you're going to post it in June to vote on it even 30th?
Is the preliminary budget not on the website?
There's a budget presentation in like November or December or different. There's still cuts. That's what I think why it hasn't been talked about.
But it hasn't been shown and I think that's.
No, it has. We did it at one of our regular meetings. It's not talked about.
Then I must have missed it. I mean, is it up there on the website?
I mean, we can find.
I thought I had gone on to look for it and I couldn't find anything for 15, 16. Maybe it's been updated, but.
There should be an Excel spreadsheet out there that has the 15, it's a five-year budget. It's a five-year budget. It shows 15, 16, 16, 17, 17, 18, 18, 19 and 19, 20. It shows all five years.
Does it show the proposed budget for 15, 16?
Yeah, 15, 16, yes. Yeah, it's out there. Okay. If you need it, we can, you know, email the board and we'll make sure we email to you.
I've just been reading and I haven't seen it, so I must have missed it at some point.
No worries.
Shane Tackle, A30Gger Town Road. Mr. Martino, you made a speech in the beginning of the meetings stating rumors. I do think you have to own a rumor of cutting. Even though you haven't cut in the last two years, there's been proposals to cut and cut and cut. We just, we just heard, you know, the 34 potential classes cut. I'm going to go home and what I'm going to say is there's going to be a potential of 17 to 34 classes cut. And that's, if that's what you have to do, you have to do. But when you get offended or you want to try to steer rumors, you know, clear that this board, which you're the president of and you're the one guiding the board, wants to cut 17 to 34 classes, guidance counselors, psychologists, it does look like this board is all about cuts. You mentioned about AP classes being more AP classes. Along with those AP classes, there's going to be a cut in honors. So in order, you're not adding AP with honors, you're not going to get honors. You have to either make one or the other, AP or is it accelerated?
Oh, you're right.
Yeah. So, you know, along with what you're, you say you're adding, there's also a cut. So I just want to point that out. And thank you, Ms. Ruth. Yeah. For making it clear about the kindergarten, because I was wondering how that, such a huge number. I know Mrs. Bush, she did a lot of work and I didn't believe that she could have made a $500,000 error. But since you explained what you did, it makes a lot more sense now.
But yeah, let's just be clear, it's not free.
Right, no.
As Mr. Martino said, but it also doesn't cost us an additional $500,000 off of there.
Well, I think that's. I understood that once you, once you mentioned what you did.
I think that's, you have to be very careful with the language you use. But for bringing it back, the half a million dollars would not be in the budget. And so in my opinion, that's adding money to the budget. And the biggest concern I had as a board member is making sure that we don't have to be in a position where we are making the cuts that have been discussed in the past, whether we even have kindergarten at all, whether we even have a sports program at all, because those are fun conversations to have. We have a $6 million pension liability hanging over our heads over the next five years. And as a board, I know I spend a lot of time thinking about it day in and day out. How do we find $6 million in four years?
No, I understand that, Joe. All I was saying is, it made it a little bit more clear what's.
When you, when you went to half-day kindergarten and you saved $144,000 a year and then you bring kindergarten back, you can't say that it doesn't cost anything. There is a cost.
There's a cost, but it's not an added. You're not going to have to raise taxes in order to cover.
Yes. Yes.
The whole $400,000, $500,000.
Shane, the way we're doing the budget right now, we have a balanced budget. There's certain assumptions that are being made in the five-year model of zero increase in taxes, zero increase in state funding, zero, we flatlined everything so that we can see when you do bring something back, you're going to, it shows up what the true cost that's going to be. And if something goes away, you see what the cost of that's going to be. And so that everybody can now evaluate the dollars that are being used because we have a finite amount of money. Think about, you have $50 in your pocket, okay? And you got to figure out what you're going to spend it on. And that's what we have. It's capital rationing. So when we have this conversation about high school offerings and it's whether it's AP courses or you want to offer Chinese or something new, there's a cost that's associated with that. And so the question is, what's the biggest bang for our buck for those dollars? Okay? If you have a teacher that can teach an AP class, great. Is that the best use of that teacher's time or is it remedial math for somebody else? I don't know what the answer to that is, but I do want to know what the cost is. And then it's up to the board to understand, okay, how do we best spend those dollars? And that's what I think the board is trying to get to. So I shy away from these, these words like cut because, you know, quite frankly, we're going to be cutting a lot of things if we don't figure out some way to balance our budget in the years going forward. $6 million is a lot of money. And maybe we're off by that, maybe the state comes in and gives us some money. But when you have enrollment that's declining and we start talking about counselors or some other things, the need for a counselor or the need for a psychologist is based on the demand for that service. So if the total number of students is declining, maybe there's a, there's less demand for that particular service.
Right.
So it's not a bad thing, it's not a bad thing to reduce the services that you no longer need, right? And in the same vein, if enrollment goes up and you have more demand for a service, you can add it back. People seem to stand up and applaud when we add things that may or may not be a good use of funds. But when you sit there and say, look, the reverse logic is true, that when enrollment's going up and we're adding things, everybody seems to think that's a great thing. And when the enrollment turns around and goes the other way and you reduce those services that you added to take care of the increased enrollment, suddenly it's bad. I don't understand the logic of that. And so I think we have to be careful about using these terms like cutting. Not offering something that you didn't need anymore. Well, that's because that's what's in the.
And that's why I was pointing out, you know, there's rumors that go by because when you come to the meetings and you hear cutting this and cutting that, people home and they're going to say, well, you know, we got a clarification in the beginning of the meeting, but this board isn't all about cuts. But throughout the meeting, we hear potential cuts.
I think what you heard was in terms of these 34 classes was, A, that some of them shouldn't have been offered in the first place according to board policy. And in the years I've been sitting here, we've found lots of things that were going on in the school district that shouldn't have been going on according to board policy. So it's one, conforming to the governing documents, there's supposed to be. They're supposed to be administering what we do. And if we're not even gonna follow our own rules, that's a problem, right? So I think one is the board is focused on, hey, look, let's make sure that administratively we're following the guiding and governing documents that we've set out for ourselves to abide by. And then two, I think the question was, in terms of the 34 course offerings, was the curriculum instruction committee was talking about bringing in AP class in lieu of some of these other things and using excess capacity to bring in different course offering. Not necessarily no course offering. And what the board voted no against the other night was maybe that's not the best use of those resources. Maybe we ought to be looking at some of these other more remedial classes that provide support to students that needed, as opposed to the advanced end of the spectrum. And so I know for me, I wanna be able to quantify what that, those dollars were and then have a conversation about how those, what's the best use of that money. It wasn't necessarily, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna scale all the way back to zero and that's what we're gonna present as a budget. It was let's scale back to zero and see what that is. And then when we bring things back, so people understand, listen, you wanna offer a new course? This is what the cost of that new course is. You wanna bring in AP, you wanna bring in kindergarten, whatever it is. I mean, ultimately, money is about choices, right? We only have so much money, so how are you gonna spend it? You wanna bring in kindergarten? Well, that might mean we're not offering 34 classes at the high school. Is that a cut?
Yeah.
Is it, is it bringing something back?
Yeah.
Is it a trade-off? Absolutely.
Mr. Tockel, you addressed what I said, so let me clarify it for you. And your, and your time is long since over, but sorry.
I'll give you a break.
Let me clarify it.
Andrew did most of the speaking.
Let me clarify what I said. And I'll clarify it. We haven't cut any authorized programs. Last year in a curriculum committee, Mr. Hankel was instructed by the board president meeting and the superintendent, Mrs. Torshur, that he was not to have any classes with less than 10 students unless the board approved. And he was told that very clearly and very bluntly. Through a lack of oversight, either by the administration or the board, whomever, Mr. Hankel had classes that were unauthorized. And we had heard there were six classes. And we were appalled that there were six after he was told not to have any. Mr. McKnight came in and found over 30. So we are not cutting anything that is authorized by the board or by the administration.
But it's your policy. You can change your policy.
But we haven't changed the policy and Mr. Hankel is...
Maybe the policy should be reviewed and looked at.
I'm not gonna debate that. We can, maybe we will, but we haven't.
Well, I would recommend as something in the public...
Thank you.
To take a look at that policy.
We're not debating, Mr....
No, no, I'm just...
Let me explain it. Mr. Tockel, I let you talk. Let me talk. Kindergarten. The teachers that are talked about being furloughed due to a reduction in enrollment, they're gone. As far as our proposed budget, that's already been taken out of the budget. To add back anything, including kindergarten, is now a cost. So it does cost money. Because those people, based on status quo enrollment, will be gone. As far as what you said about, we're not offering AP courses, we're doing it in lieu of, that's not true. The curriculum committee, and this was before Mr. McKnight got here, was made a presentation by Mr. Hankel and Mrs. Weber. Mrs. Bykes was there, Mr. Kurtz was there, I was there. I forget who the fourth member of the board was, of the committee was. And they made a presentation about these additional courses they wanted to add next year, including AP courses. And I asked a simple question, is there any additional cost? And they said, no. It was not in lieu of other courses, they were additional courses. Now, what Mr. McKnight has come in and found and what he's proposed in terms of compressing the curriculum offered, has nothing to do with what the board had approved prior to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Shane, you're gonna cut 30 rural cafeteria rooms, stop... But that's not a...
Steve Miller, just a comment on rumors again as well. You said that, and again, that you weren't going to increase class sizes for your enrollment to do that, but then you had requested information on raising the class sizes to the maximum. So that's how I type a rumor like this start. But the question I had is, and I believe Mr. Wolf last month had requested bigger model be embedded for predictive, you know, class sizes and student population moving forward. But I hear that we're going to do that, that we're going to take the model. You said the first engineer, that's not really the term. But we're gonna take the model and we're going to go against past performance and see how well it actually predicted the future. Is that something that we're doing?
Yes, the answer is... There we go. The answer is yes. As I stated earlier, that the business office that already started down that path and what they found, it was being, it was getting difficult to present the data because each year that you took and looked at the predictive model, you got one curve, right? And then you went back another year, you had a different curve. And you had a different curve for each year. And so statistically, there's a way that you can model that to present different confidence intervals and move that forward to get a overall predictive curve and then compare that to the actual. And I believe at the last meeting, the business manager said he was gonna take a look at that data and see if he could work that and make it work so that it was something presentable and readable for the public. And we haven't met again, so I don't know where they stand on that particular issue. But it is something that's being worked on.
Is there any way to share the actual model and parameters?
Which part of the model would you like to see?
I'd like to see the model, the different frameworks that you're using actually, the basic predictions, the prediction, the data analysis model.
Well, I think it's, I mean, the Excel model that they put together in terms of the data that they use for predicting the enrollments going forward is the information that was shared at the finance committee meeting and that was shared the year prior at the budget meeting.
So you have the parameters and each piece is impacting the future growth by X amount, et cetera. As for projection, they have different pieces out of the data model and use them to forecast different percentages.
That's how they put it together.
So it's in there. Okay. Right. Great. And one last question, it's not really on prediction of the future, I guess it might be. Are we actually doing inquiries on why students are leaving, helping families and doing...
What do you mean by students leaving?
Going to charter schools, going, I just keep hearing the population, I mean, we're losing 100 students a year. Have you done any research as to why?
Well, I think...
It's not, I'm sorry to interrupt, it's not purely the population, but I mean, you see some census data, we're pretty much flat census.
So in terms of the birth rates, birth rates have dropped dramatically in the last eight years. So that has a huge impact on the enrollment in the school district. If you recall the population information that we've shared with everybody and it's out now on the website, you'll see that there was a population bubble that came through the school district. It's actually two bubbles. That bubble's now in the high school. It's no longer in the kindergarten, elementary schools. So as that bubble moved through, you have trough behind it. And that's probably the larger, the largest statistical, I'd say, driver in the overall enrollments.
But the census figures put out a study that they're expecting the population growth to increase Southeastern Pennsylvania in the next 10 years.
That may be what they're predicting, but that's gonna be an effect of, you know, how many people are having babies.
Well, it's also people moving into the area. We're not gonna be able to move into the area.
Yeah, and so as Mr. Martino put out there, housing starts has something to do with that. Business relocation has something to do with it. Real estate taxes impacts both of those things.
Quality of schools is one of the drivers as well. In addition or instead of taxes, I know talking to others that are moving into the area, they're choosing where to live based on the school reputation, not necessarily private taxes.
Well, home affordability is a big one for a new family, I think. So if you're moving to Boyertown and your real estate taxes are $2,500 a year for the same size houses, they are in, over $8,000 or $9,000 a year. That certainly impacts home affordability.
I think Boyertown's $25,000 and we're $28,000 a year.
Yeah, but you have to look at the overall tax structure for each of those things for similar houses.
Village, right? Village is one of the...
Assessments.
Yeah.
But that's the other... We did a reassessment, actually, true enough.
That's, that's the other school district's ability.
Let me just assure you of something, Mr. Miller. You're talking about this prediction that Southeastern Pennsylvania will increase in population. Should our student population increase, then, then our projections would need to change. I mean, they're based on, like, the projections for reductions in the coming year, 15, 16, are based on current enrollment. And, and some projection.
That's fine.
Obviously on current enrollment.
We just tackled this, but we're trying to close the schools and having to reopen the model. It seems like we're very reactive, you know, perfectly backed this year, next year. Let's build a school, let's close it. I sense some strategic planning.
Well, if we'd done some strategic planning a few years ago, we wouldn't have some of the schools that we have.
You're absolutely right.
So that's what this board's trying to do, is strategic plan. Have a better understanding what the enrollment's going to be going forward so that we can prepare for it. I mean, that's exactly what we've been saying year in, year out, meeting in, meeting out for the last five years. Is instead of sitting there and look at something with a myopic viewpoint and just saying, hey, look, based on, I don't know what, current enrollment, we're gonna decide that we're gonna go build a school. It's, it's a ridiculous premise, but that's what was done. Okay? Now what we're saying is, look, let's take a look at a variety of different factors. Birth rates, housing starts, housing permits, zoning, taxes, a whole potpourri of different data. We're gonna compare that to both county and state and national statistics to make sure that the ratios and the predictability of our model is consistent with other statistical benchmarks. And we're gonna, we're gonna do a better job in predicting what's going on going forward. And instead of being patted on the back and saying, hey, look, guys, we appreciate you guys taking a deeper dive into this and really spending some time to try to understand exactly what the future may bring, we're being castigated for it. It seems, it's a ridiculous premise to me. And historically, if you go back and you look at our enrollment, it has been dropping 100 students a year. Started 2008, we had over 4,005 students enrolled in the school district in that school year. We're down to 3,500.
I do know some students are leaving because of...
Regardless of why they're leaving. I mean, they were, let me tell you something.
It's a self-proclaimed prophecy.
The students were leaving long before any cuts were made in this school district. Okay? In 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, no cuts were being made in the school district. It wasn't until the recession hit and the impact of the teachers' contract had took its full stride that we started to see the budget crunches that we had. So you can't point to declining enrollment and say it's because of the cuts the school district were making. Those, the enrollment was well on its way down long before any cuts were being made in the schools.
That's understood. I mean, that was the recession, 2008, '09, and now it's... That's understood.
Mr. Miller, here's, here's the statistical data that's handed to the board tonight on enrollment. From March of last year to March of this year, we've dropped 97 students. The 97 students are not in a high school. The high school is actually 2040, 52, about 26 students higher than a year ago. It's the elementary school because of the lower birth rate, because of the, the lack of housing starts that is lower than it was a year ago. But we have lost 97 students.
Are we sure that's why we lost because of birth rates and housing starts?
You could conjecture anything you want. You could say housing starts, I could say birth rates, you could say taxes, I could say programs. The fact is, the enrollment's down.
Can we do a survey of where the students went or...
That's a good question. Doesn't?
Don't know, we track that information from, doesn't P E track that information when we have students drop out of system and where, how the public has access to that?
They wouldn't have access to it. It's a part of our child accounting as far as enrollment slash withdrawals. And what I'm seeing as far as withdrawals, students are moving out of, because it seems like their parents are moving out of state, maybe because of jobs. But they're not just moving to, in some cases, they're not just moving to neighboring school districts. Now, I have seen quite a few moving towards O N J Roberts. As far as students that are going into cyber school, we don't have a large number of those students moving out. We do have something in place to where we are interviewing and we are intervening and trying to, you know, get information from the parent as to why they wanna go to that way of education. Some of those students are students with special needs that are just thinking that it may be a different way to meet their needs, opposed to sitting in the classroom. That, that frustrates them in some ways and gives them a little bit more freedom. But, Mr. Hurley, can you speak to any other part of student moving out that we are watching?
Yeah, I mean, there's not a discernible pattern in it.
Right. But I am seeing families moving and it's...
I just personally, there's a lot of people going to private schools. I don't know if that's just my personal experience.
We have, I mean...
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Can we make sure, can that private school report be published? We've been talking about this for a long time, so people can see the numbers.
That's a transportation, what numbers are you referring to on that?
What is the school transportation on...
That is a transportation.
And that is published?
No, that is not.
Do you have that compared to last year, the year before, the year before that?
At all.
Cause unless you can track a pattern, then you don't know that that's increasing or decreasing.
Well, the report might not, but the data is clearly there. So that's what I'm suggesting that...
The data says there's 30 people in the school, but how many were there?
This says 228, 15, Berks, Capica, 69 students registered. And it says 331, they still have 69 for net change of zero. I think the public would be interested in seeing that.
I know.
Where our students are going. A grand total of 570, 571. Why, why, why would this be a secret document?
Nobody says it's a secret document. I don't know why you'd use that word.
That's all I'm asking.
I don't think that piece of paper shows a pattern.
Could we, Mrs.?
I don't see why we couldn't put that on there with the enrollment. I don't feel as though...
Is this part of official board document or nothing else?
I'd say rather too. I think if you look at the graph that was done for the enrollment presentation, even when we had our maximum enrollment, we still, with the addition of Monocacy Elementary Center, were over capacity by almost 1,000 students. If, if somebody had charted that out 10 years ago, what we're trying to do now, we might not have built that and we wouldn't have to talk about closing it. And that 9 million or 18 million or whatever it was could have gone to education. So, you know, it's not just that people are leaving. It's that we never utilized these schools to capacity because we didn't need them.
But if the public needs to see the data that we see to draw those same conclusions, I think it's coming upon us.
Okay.
Okay. Because that was what Mr. Miller said. All he said was, what are the reasons, where are they? I'm just responding to Mr. Miller's comments. And he said, what are the reasons people are leaving, where are they going, things like that. And we have some of that data, it should be available.
So most people are going to private school regardless of how great...
I agree.
Take a look at, look, we're not the only school district in Southeastern Pennsylvania that has declining enrollment. You know, the fact that we're just looking at closing for two buildings. Fleetwood has had a declining enrollment for years.
They all are.
I mean, every single school district in the area has seen declining enrollments. It's not like it's a phenomenon that's unique to Daniel Boone. And before somebody comes up here and starts pointing the finger at the board and the school district for saying, hey, look, it's, it's the decisions you're making about cutting programs or closing buildings or something else, take a look at the data in surrounding communities. Take a look into data in surrounding counties. And then take a look at global, take a global approach to this thing and take a look at what the overall impact is. We're not unique, what's going on here. And again, in the heyday of building construction, building new buildings, building new stadiums, adding more forces, increasing budgets, students, the student enrollment was declining by 100 to 200 students a year. The statistics just don't bear out the assumptions and the, and the leaps of logic that are being made here in terms of the accusations being leveled at the board and at the district for doing something that has nothing to do with our population.
We've talked about this for a while and the only thing that I would have to say is that we don't know. Everybody has a different reason for moving. It could be taxes, it could be personal, it could be work, it could be school. We don't know. So I mean, this whole discussion we're listening to is almost a fool's errand at this point because we have no idea.
We have a lot of agenda.
We have a lot of agenda to get to.
Moving on to personnel, and I'm not gonna read all these. They're basically leaves or appointments. What else do, are there any questions regarding any of the personnel issues on the agenda? While they're looking, Casey, I do have one question. The maintenance employee that's resigning effective April 13th today, do we need to replace that person?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any other questions regarding personnel? Saying none, is there any public comment regarding personnel? Moving on to programs. We just discussed the monthly enrollment report. Are there any questions on that student data? If not, we'll move on to the AEC, BEC summer band camp proposal. Any questions or comments about the summer band camp proposal?
Well, as long as we need it.
Well, as long as we need it. We have, we know we have, there has to be a certain enrollment to make, to make it work, to make it financially sound. I mean, why, why wouldn't we just have an administrative guideline for the same thing as a class like any other? I mean, as long as there, whatever the number setting is, 50s, as long as we're getting 50, we can continue, continue with the class.
Well, we have, we have discussed. The proposal being that, did we really need to use our teachers and their pay rate to conduct the Summer Band Camp? Mr. McKnighter, in his presentation, had talked about doing summer programs that generated money for the district. This doesn't.
The, I will say, I'm not there yet, but that is the long-term goal. It certainly, by next summer, we're running a full program at the high school that offers a host of, what I refer to as a Blazer Summer, and running a full camp venue, working with Ms. Goss and, and developing. But, as you can tell, there's been a lot of activity going on close to...
My question is, is the proposal that was presented to the board was based on 60 to 90 students, but my understanding was that it's a break-even point at 60 students. What if 90 students do enroll, where's the additional money go?
That's, that's my initial question.
It's elementary schools.
Right, it's elementary, and if there would be additional money, it, it went into, um, I wanna say the, Mr. Small, help me, the student activities, right? So, it stays within a budget area, that then would go towards band, elementary band?
I guess, from my understanding was, because when I first saw the proposal, my understanding was, it's not really a school program. It's a, it's a, it's a special program run, but it's not school-sponsored. So, therefore, I guess, I kinda look at it as a science camp, or some, any kind of a camp that somebody wanted to run, if it's not school-sponsored. So, then, I don't really understand why it would run through our...
Payroll.
Our payroll. And, or, if we are taking in extra money, or, there, then I think that should just go into, I mean, that should go to school, because it's, the school's provided the liability insurance, and the, the building, and the facility, and the pension, you know, and all that, so, I, I don't...
And I don't disagree, and that's why I brought it to the board level for discussion, because knowing the direction that the board wanted to go, I wanted to be able to have dialogue, as far as, are these things that we wanna continue to do? We've had theater camps, summer school's much the same, you know, every year we do summer school for the high school, middle school has phased out, you know, other options, you know, just you, I put it here for discussion purposes, the way that it has run, and it's long before I even started my tenure here in Daniel Boone, was that, in the summer, the instrumental music teachers at the elementary level would run a camp, sometimes the middle school instrumental music teacher would get involved as well, they ran the camp for the students, the parents embraced it, and the fees that they were charging covered the cost of the program.
I have a few questions here. If this program isn't being run really by the school, it is almost like a private contractor, I know that we use, our staff do it, but they're not in their capacity as our employees, they're doing it on their own, is that correct?
Well, they're initiating it.
Yes.
So, I, it's hard to say if it's a school district-sponsored activity, or if, because you've embraced it all the other years, or the boards in the past have embraced it all the other years.
Well, we have been really distinctly aware of...
I, I believe they've been always, they've always been on the agenda around this time of year, but not a lot of conversation, I think that it's been...
Well, my question then becomes, if we are not, um, if this isn't necessarily a Daniel Boone official, um, school, under the contract-style program, then do we need to pay the, or do they need to charge the summer school salary and benefits?
I believe the way that the correctly, the collective bargaining agreement is listed with regard to summer school teaching, that...
But it's not summer school teaching, if it's not, I mean, if it's not school-sponsored...
The labor questions need to be answered by Mr. Subers, because that's really what it comes down to. I, I have a problem, if, if this could be offered at a lower cost to students, we might have more students sign up. So, I don't know, I think that needs to be determined before we forward with this. That's just my view on it.
Well, and based on several of the board members have said, if it's not a school-sponsored function, why is it going through the school payroll?
Yeah.
And why would we pay pension costs and other benefits? If it's not a school-sponsored function?
We should.
So, I think that needs to be clarified by the voting meeting, because we have to vote on it.
I think that Mr. Small and I have to have a conversation, because I, I'd have to understand, and I'll get Brian involved as well, as to, you know, yeah, where that goes. Yeah?
I just, my, my opinion is, if the, if you can guarantee that the class will only be held, if it's at least a break-even activity, why wouldn't you do it? Because those costs are being absorbed by the students that are enrolling in the program.
Because we could offer it at a lower cost, if we do it differently, I think is what Mr. Kurtz is saying.
But every year, that, every year that the pension cost up, goes up, and their cost goes up, maybe it's not $60, um, maybe it's not 60 students, maybe it's 65 students, maybe it's 70 students in a couple of years. But, I, I don't, I would hate to see, I've never, my, my children all went through the music, they never took, 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 uh, took, uh, this particular band camp, but I would hate to see something with the history that it has be eliminated, when it really truly has, if, if, if we make the numbers work, it has no cost to the district. Or at least the people that are enrolling in are paying for that, for that total cost.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, Mr. Kurtz, we're out here, we're 101 students in summer camp, in band camp, in summer, 2014. So, while...
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Well, there's, there's been several issues raised that need to be answered by April 27th. Other comments or questions? Public comment on programs? Saying none, we'll move on to policy, is there a policy review committee report?
My mind is still stuck on... Okay, we, very exciting day, as far as policies. We did have a presenter from PSBA come in today and do a presentation for us on the transition of our policies. It'd be interesting to note that, you know, they're gonna start with, say, the Zero policies, and they're going to move those to their, to their website, and that's where there's gonna be an interim location, where we're gonna, that's where all the work is gonna be done on, where they do the review. The public will still see the original Zero policy, all the policies that, that are, that we currently have enacted, still on our website. As we release, as they release, and then this board ultimately votes on those adoption of the revised policies, the Zeros are going to, I'm just using those as a, as an example, those Zeros are gonna be removed from the district website, and another link will be added to our district website, that will forward them to what the PSBA website, where the policies will reside. Once, once we're all done, and get through all, all the way to 900, Danny Boone's website won't be hosting any policies, and everything will be in the PSBA. So, you click a link, you can go, just, it almost looks exactly like our, um, our website, how the demonstration was. You'll be able to, you know, pull down a PDF if you want, same as what we have. It'll be hosted by PSBA going forward, and I was told there's the cost to, of that, is there's no additional cost to the, to the district to host that on their website beyond what our subscription is. So, as long as we're maintaining our subscription to PASBA, you know, we'll be continuing to develop, continue to host our, our policies. So, that was the, probably the most exciting aspect of our, of our meeting today, probably took about an hour. Exciting as policy, yeah. And, we're working on a conflict of interest policy, we have a few things, we're going back, back to, um, Mr. Subers on, a couple of questions, and then we, we schedule another meeting today for the end of this month. I'll get that date, it was the 28th, I think, I guess.
I gave them to Mrs. Kramer. April 28th, at 6 o'clock.
We're gonna try to squeeze in a couple of extra meetings between now and the end of the year, because there's a full docket of things to do. We, we lost a meeting last month, and we couldn't reschedule. Among those policies are fundraising, we'll take a look at fundraising, how that's done, building new policies, those are things that are, that we feel need to get done in the current school year before the new school year starts, and we wanna make sure everyone understands the rules going forward in the next school year. Please, your report.
I have a quick question, and Mia, that we stop the members of PASBA, if something happens to PASBA, how will we get our policies? We have the download loan, or...
They, they would supply them back to us in, in, what, the PDF format?
Right.
And as a part of the recent agreement? Um, I don't know.
I don't know that I read that, I, I didn't specifically look for that, Connor, I'm sorry.
No, I was just curious, it's always good to have...
Can you check that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was a question that was asked and answered, that we would get them back.
Let's not go with a verbal on that, that's huge.
That probably would be outside of this agreement, would it not be our official PASB?
Within that subscription, the annual subscription...
Right, right.
Or a PNN can refer to.
The main one, one that, yes.
It's the main.
So, I'll, I'll look.
Do you wanna look around?
Yeah.
Or, maybe you...
I'll, I'll contact him, yeah.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Any public comment on policy?
What's the cost of this subscription you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
What's the cost of this subscription that you're talking about that we pay?
About 10 grand a year, 10 or 11.
10 grand a year, you can't do that in-house?
No, Mr., um...
We have ITs, you can't do...
Mr. Temple, the, the subscription to PASBA offers the school leadership a variety of services, and one of the biggest things that it does is that, through our insurance, for the school district, where we purchase our insurance, it, it dramatically reduces our rate. And, several years ago, when we were looking at budgets, you may recall, one of the things we thought about eliminating was our PASBA subscription. And, the cost savings from just being a part of PASBA on our insurance alone, well exceeded the $10,000, or $11,000 that we spend to be a member. And so, therefore, we decided to keep the subscription. In addition to that, they offer a whole host of services. There's board education and training, there's board meditation, there are seminars that they offer on a variety of topics that the board deals with, that board members can take advantage of, so they become more educated, and have a better understanding of what's going on in, in the educational world. This review service is another thing that they offer. So, there's a, there's a potpourri of, of services that being a member of PASBA and paying that subscription service provides, in addition to this particular service that we paid for. The service we just paid for in terms of the policies, I think it was about $7,500 or $7,400, to go through all of our policies, review them, all of the time. Some of them need to be updated, they have to have school code references and put in, and the, and, quite frankly, we're a part-time board, we don't have that amount of time to go through literally hundreds of policies. So, you know, we're, we're giving it to their legal experts to look at it, they're gonna give it back to us, and tell us what, recommend what's to change, or what to remove, and then we could either continue to, we can accept the recommendations, or we can put, or maybe we can spin on it if we need to, but at least it gets us...
For a time, but we got a full-time administration that can help here, too.
Moving on, is there any transportation report? Old business facilities use update?
Yeah, I was just curious, is that, if you guys didn't get that form together, and is that pertaining?
It's on our, it's on our, it is on the running agenda, but we've had other things kinda take over lately.
I was just curious.
It's also part of our policy, because they have to, they have to come together, and that, it's, that's been kinda pushed back, too. So, but it is on our list as well, to be done before the end of June.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. ...
Right.
Any public comment on old business? Saying none, we'll move on to new business, and, and, there's a lot of new business, and I'll try and take these, most of them one at a time. Facilities use agreement between the school district, the American Cancer Society for the Relay for Life, any comments or questions on that? Saying none, items B and C, to approve the appointment of Mr. Rafkeb and Mr. Wolf as temporary board president for the sole purpose of signing their daughter's high school diplomas for graduation this, this June. Any comments or questions?
Actually, I don't have any.
I'm not bad.
Did you ask your daughter?
No, I'm just kidding. But I want to be added to the list, I have an niece that's graduating as well.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
They only talk about children.
Yes, we have children. My daughter wasn't very proud of them.
I apologize.
It's okay, I'm not bad.
You did what I did.
No, I knew that when you asked.
Mrs. Blaze, did you want to discuss the 2016 PSBA legislative platform and development of PSBA video?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Martino. I spent a day up at the VCOU, getting training from a couple of very proficient lawyers, one of which was Brian Borland. I spent the whole day with a bunch of orders, and I learned a lot of information. One of the, the key points that was made were that, when these regulations, when PDE, when state legislation passes regulations, they trickle down to new policies with the board, and they're cautioning us to make sure that we get our policies in place for the two new laws, one of which was touched, touched on earlier, suicide prevention, and the new requirements for volunteers. And there's, you know, some, some gray area there, where there's no training required for volunteers, but yet, there is a responsibility for them to report child abuse. But, then again, they were never trained on what it is, or how to report it. So, anyway, go ahead, you can...
I'm sorry, any, anyone that is coming in and volunteering and working as a, a volunteer on a regular basis, not just coming into the building, they are trained for how to report child abuse. It's part of Act 168, and it's a requirement that went into place last year, and everyone had to sit through a three-hour training. So, even if you're a volunteer, a volunteer coach, or a volunteer in some capacity, but, but we can't grab each of, like, the singletons, the people that come in to volunteer in their child's classroom, and they're under the supervision, they're, they wouldn't be mandated reporters, because they wouldn't be expected to have that child abuse clearance to come in, because they're never unsupervised. So, that's part of what we need to do with that volunteer policy, though. Do we want to tighten it up? Do we wanna go to a Raptor system, where everyone comes in, and, you know, it's kinda like you just slide the license right through this machine, and it gives us an alert if there's something going on, so that we know, but they wouldn't be trained with regards to the, the mandated reporting. But, anybody that's on, long-term, the bus drivers, all of our aides, the, the volunteer coaches, cafeteria workers, everyone had to sit through the three-hour training.
Good, sounds like they're a little bit ahead of the curve, though, so that's good. And, anyway, it was just the emphasis on making sure you have policies in place every time the legislation is passed. I also wanted to say that it's the last chance to discuss how state funding issues are impacting our children's educational opportunities, taxes in communities, by participating in the last basic education funding roundup. And, I think it's an email out on us, it's at Penn State Lehigh Valley, Center Valley, on April 22nd at 7 o'clock, specifically the school funding formula, they're kinda wrapping things up there, and it's our next chance to weigh in as individuals or as a board. And then, in regard to number three, and in regard to the video on PASBA, and on the PASBA coordinator, so I'm bringing these things up, I'm not sure if it's a priority for us at this time or not, but they're asking for us to produce a 30-second video clip, where we briefly tell the impact on our school, students, and community of one of these four areas. Unfunded mandates, how they impact us, the creation of the basic education formula, and what it would, what it means for our school entity, how rising pension costs impact our school entity, and how, or how tuition costs you pay for students in... school entity and how, or how tuition costs you pay for students in charter schools are impacting your budget. So I guess I just wanted to see if the board had any desire to pursue a 30-second video to, you know, to weigh in, help pass, but they want to strengthen, they want to put a package together for legislators to present that, you know, how these things impact us and advocate for us. And I thought since they put such a nice video together there at the, at Earthworld lately, Shake It Off, maybe we could bring some of that talent to, to, yeah. So anyway, that's all, I wanted to just ask the board how they felt about that.
Thank you, Mrs. Bates. Before I go back to the agenda, I was, I was handed a note, would the board members who made too many reports, please forward that information to Mrs. Kramer so she could log it in her minutes, please. And I had skipped an item to approve the revised 2015-16 school year calendar, which we had already approved, what is this revision refreshing?
It's just a tweak of a half-day moving it from one Friday to the Friday prior so that it's in line with when the students go to the prom so that we don't have a mass exodus of students. Traditionally, they always have the prom the Friday before Mother's Day. I was in the loop on that, it just happened to keep falling correctly as the calendar was made, so.
So it doesn't change the yearly calendar, just the one that?
It doesn't change, right, just one triangle goes from the 13th to the 6th in May.
The newsletter, I don't want to go into depth tonight because I was talking to Mr. Small, we were trying to get some, some numbers. We have several newsletters, one of which is the district newsletter that until a couple of days ago, we had no idea who it went to. And we're paying about $1,500 to send it to like 82 people. And we have a high school newsletter and we have a middle school newsletter and my thought and something I'd like to all consider for a future meeting is to have a district newsletter. This is the Daniel Boone Area School District, not individual schools. And if we had like a four-page newsletter produced three times a year, with the front page being board and administrations, second page being high school, the third page middle school, and the last page elementary school, we would probably save some money and mail it out with our nonprofit bulk rate permit to the 8,000 or so residences in the district so that everybody knows what's going on in the school district, not just people that access our website. So that, that's for future discussion. The website discussion, Mr. Metz, how long is your presentation?
I can shorten it.
Shorten it to what?
Give it five, 10 minutes.
Give us five minutes, will you? Mr. Metz has been revising the district website and I just wanted everybody to see what he has so far and get the board's input on what they like or don't like.
Question hours.
Four and a half minutes left, Mr. Metz.
Why don't you do another one?
Well, Mr. Metz is setting up and again, this is another thing I don't want to belabor tonight, and this was my idea to restore the rifle with the Daniel Boone logo. For those of you that do not follow history, Daniel Boone was a frontiersman, he was a soldier, he was a pioneer. Mr. Boone carried a long rifle, I mean, that was part of his persona. For those of you that don't know, if you would research Daniel Boone on Wikipedia, you'll find that the movie The Last of the Mohicans was actually about the kidnapping of his two daughters. He carried a rifle and I think it's like revisionist history trying to be too politically correct to have the rifle not part of the logo, but again, for future discussion.
He's on the gym floor with his rifle.
But we've taken it out of everything else, I believe.
We don't really, we don't really use, it's not used a whole lot, but yeah.
We could talk about that. Mr. Metz?
Current website, we all know and probably loathe it at this point. 2009 is when the current website was released. It served its time and then some. It lacks a lot of the modern features we expect to be in a website. So I will quickly just run down some of the functional updates in the new website. Graphics and different things, don't pay attention to that, we'll hit that at the end. But what I want to show you first is this website, we're in Google Chrome, the website will work in any browser now. One of the problems, we ran into it tonight with Mrs. Bates, the current website doesn't work on iPads very well, it certainly isn't mobile-friendly. Mac PC, you know, if you're on a Mac, you get a totally different viewing experience than if you're on Windows 7 versus Windows 8. This website is agnostic, it doesn't care where you're viewing it, how you're viewing it. If we're looking at it on an iPhone, it's going to adjust for you. And so here you can see, it's mimicking an iPhone for you. You get a slightly different menu, but, you know, no longer, I constantly hear complaints, you know, I can't access the website on my phone, it doesn't load, I can't click buttons. Those days are going to be gone for us. The next biggest complaint we received from the community and, you know, employees as well as the calendar. You know, we have an online calendar on the current site, but that, that's where it's at, it's on the current site. It doesn't load on your computer, it doesn't load on your phone. The current website, or the new website, we're adding a button down here, subscribe to this calendar, so now you can add this calendar to your phone, to your computer, if you have Gmail, it's going to go into Gmail. And we're not going to use this concept just for events, this is where, for the board calendar, we'll allow that. Our lunch menus, we're going to use a similar format, so you can add your lunch menu to the phone, even cycle days, we're going to allow that, you'll be able to subscribe to that all on your phone, or computer outlook, wherever you have it. So that, that's been the biggest complaint, that's been around two, three years. Several other districts in the area have that feature. You know, I'm sure most of us have a smartphone in our pocket right now, that's how we live, off of our events, so now as we update items, it'll automatically update on the phone. And we can keep our community much more abreast of events as they change. That's the, the second biggest feature, I'll show you a quick, just, here we go, just a general layout as well. Again, this will all update depending on your, on your browser, but as I was talking about the cafeteria menus, so here's just a quick through on this week so we could demonstrate that tonight. All this information would push out to our community. Yeah, we'll do that by building elementary, high school, what have you. And finally, really the one piece I can't demonstrate tonight is the interoperability we'll have with this website. So talking about the, the board docs or even, you know, when you talk about newsletter, different things, this website will interface with a lot more devices for us, a lot more systems. So the board calendar, I'm going to base that off a Google Doc site, the board has, you know, brought up Google Docs, I think there's a low learning curve there. So that's what we'll transition to there. As far as social media, Facebook, Twitter, all those things, as we post a news announcement on this site, we can automatically feed that over, so we have consistent messages across all of our different platforms. The other nice piece is, this is a free website. Our current website, we had to pay to have developed, that was a consultant that came in. This is developed in-house, it is, you know, constantly, it'll be updated, but this is a free platform and I'll work with other platforms to really lay the foundation for us to do more things online. So as we're looking at paperless forms, things of that nature, starting to look at giving our students a portal as well, the faculty has BlazerNet, which is an area that we saw our forums and things of that nature. We're going to look at doing something similar for our community and for our students, and that's really what this, what this website is setting the stage for. And that's been why it's taken a little bit longer than I, I would like to get it going, but it's basically been laying that groundwork for us to be able to do more next school year with different systems. So that, that is the quick five-minute review. If you have specific questions, I can show you the.
Is it in free?
Free.
Scott, I have one question, because you mentioned the board calendar that Mr. Basil's been asking for since he got on the board. Can that be isolated so that it's not part of the general calendar? Because there are things that the board needs to do and if they get mixed in with X number of other items.
There you go.
It could get lost.
So a Google Calendar, there's a checkbox, private, public. Public information would flow off to the, to the public website, private information would remain just for the, the school board, for you to track, you know, internal things.
I don't think that's what I'm thinking, like just the Google, just the board documents.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So under.
No, I was talking, I was talking more about a calendar, because there are things like, like certain board positions get voted on different times of the year, there are certain requirements that the board has to do, and I didn't want them to get lost among the menu.
So, so this calendar, the cafeteria menu, that's filtering just on a category that we set up called food service. On the school board section, we can filter just on your school board events, yeah, absolutely.
I have something going off of that. In the current system, there's BlazerNet, would BlazerNet now have the same Wordpress layout, like how would Wordpress, I mean?
So this is, this is the public site, yeah, BlazerNet will be following behind, so.
Okay, so we're going to have BlazerNet for what?
Yeah, we'll have a little bit longer, yeah. Once this gets launched BlazerNet, that's the next one.
But going off that, we could have a Google Calendar within BlazerNet with all of these board-level pieces and Mr. Martino ones, and that would only be visible to the board.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
When you get to the home, can you go back to the homepage?
Yep.
I guess the question I have to use, did you see the email that I sent around where it just took a sort of a snapshot of our site?
Yes, yes.
About like, I mean, can you incorporate that sort of design here so that there is, I mean, we organize ourselves as a board by committee, right, facilities, finance, you know, transportation and whatnot. And so when I go to look for information, I try to find it in a similar format on our current website, and our current website is, you know, 17 pages deep with links to information and you hear the public coming out and saying, I think Ms. Reno is here and she was saying, "Look, I couldn't find your budget." Well, it's an, unless you know where to look, it's an impossible task to find the budget. When we post something new, it shows up on our website as a small little thing like Common Core information and maybe it's highlighted in red as opposed to a big button somewhere saying, you know, whatever, enrollment data, budget, that, you know, so somebody could go there and say, "I want to get budget information, that's important." Ah, there it is. Or, "Oh gee, finance, got it," you know, and that's where I'll go first. And I'm just wondering, has there been any internal discussion in terms of a layout that's a little bit more, I don't know, committee? Well, I don't know if committee-driven is the right way or just in terms of visually user-friendly so that you can get to your information a lot quicker than going through 17 different clicks and then scanning through the list of audits and the list of tax returns and a list, I mean, like, nobody can, unless you're really some sort of hardcore finance junk, you want to get a look at that stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's, so it's a balance. If you put too much information on the homepage, then you almost create the same problem.
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, on the homepage. So the quick link section, I mean, that's all for example. You have the option to add several other blocks underneath there. Yeah, yeah, our current website, the navigation is not, is not clean.
I'm just wondering if, you know, if you had something over here.
Yeah, exactly, so that's where I was talking about.
A series of big buttons that are sort of organized by committees, so folks come into the meeting and say, "I didn't go to, I didn't go to the policy committee." Click on it, now you're at a policy page that, you know, maybe provides you with, oh, they talked about this last night, you know, here's a link to all of our policies at PASBA or whatever it may be, or.
Yeah, you could certainly have, you know, my recommendation would be to have a button that's at board committees, not necessarily fine-grained. Because what you run into, the problem is, you know, studies have found is if you have all the information on the homepage, users never browse the rest of your website to find that information, they become dependent on your homepage. So when you start posting everything there, it's fine for a short period and then you almost run into the same problem that if it's not on the homepage, no one will ever locate it. So that's where you try and find that intermediate, you know, step there that if we had a board committee, that maybe that jumped you a little bit further in, but not every single committee, because then you get into a situation, you know, then you have a button for enrollment information and things of that nature.
Scott, this is why I wanted to, so everybody could see.
Nice job.
You could, you could interface. Can I suggest that the board members that would like to see something added or amended, submit your recommendations, Mr. Metz, and he could have a conversation with you about what can and can't be done?
Well, one question, as you go through this, you know, the different team sections are like the sports, are you going to go to the sports team and say, "Hey, this is what you're," I mean, is this for all your links are correctly, is this how you want to word it? Music, I mean, all the other plugs and things?
Yeah, actually, yeah, as we're, as we've been working on this, we found a number of dead links on the, on the current website that they were parried somewhere that even I didn't realize.
I went to the music page the other day and it went to some organization that had nothing to do with Daniel Boone.
This isn't, maybe that's why we're here, but it's website, if you're a school or a choir or whatever that's school-sponsored, if you have a website, doesn't have to be through the Daniel Boone website?
That was our directive a number of years ago, was to get everything under one umbrella because we had people that were running websites that were not our own, and those people aren't even here anymore.
Yeah, so currently.
So, you know, that was an issue.
Any, any athletic website currently, you know, Ms. Goss approves, before it goes on our website, that we are aware that we approved this. A large number of them are hosted directly on our website. There's a handful that are hosted on an outside firm, not simply for feature sets, but we, you know, we approve and allow that. We're currently working with another, through our schedule store that does the athletic scheduling of different things to move, totally in-house, one system, everyone will be standardized across that to, in that spirit, you know, to keep everything under one umbrella, one look and feel.
Well, it wasn't just one look and feel, it was also content and control was the other big issue that we were wrestling with a number of years ago, so.
You don't like the message.
Your five minutes is over.
Yeah, that's the timer.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Moving on, Mr. Basil, you wanted to discuss having a legal update on the agenda?
Yeah, I guess, this just sort of dawned on me, you know, we continually are involved in arbitrations and other things that come up, whether it's contractual or some other such thing, and we had posted results of some of our, you know, recent rulings for the benefit of the public in terms of transparency. And so it just seemed to me that, you know, maybe we should have a legal update as part of our board agenda where we discuss the things that are in the public record that deal with litigation or something else that's out there against the school district, so the public's aware of what's happening. I mean, those are, that's a lot of money that's being spent on attorneys that it's not being spent on curriculum or other things that we think are important. And people wonder why, you know, why certain funds aren't there. We've had questions about how much money we spent on a retainer and other things in the past when it comes to our budget, and I think in the interest of transparency, we ought to be delivering to the public the facts. And so I think, you know, having a legal update as part of our board agenda kind of gets out there as part of the public discussion, gee, you know, why are you being sued for this, or what's going on with that particular grievance, or where did things, how did that end up? And I think that those are things that the public's entitled to, it's their money that's being spent and, you know, in the interest of transparency. We have been posting some of them, you know, just recently, some of them, most of most of the stuff has never been posted.
So that would be an information piece on the committee and the whole meeting?
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting. You know, you have, maybe not the committee whole, maybe it's a voting thing because you want Subers to kind of review, okay, well, this is, yeah, you can discuss this or no, you can't discuss that, but at the end of the day, have a summary of, you know, what we've been doing. I mean, I, without going back to my own notes, I'd have to go back and take a look and see how many, since I've been here, how many pieces of litigation have we reviewed as a board? And it's been a lot. And a lot of it, you know, is, sometimes it's frivolous, sometimes it's legitimate, and people, I think you need to be aware of that. I think it drives more accountability amongst the board, amongst the district and the different stakeholders that are involved.
Just kind of anonymize it when you post it, when you discuss it the first time, is that what you're saying?
Well, I mean, just like any other lawsuit that might be out there, stuff that's filed in a court has information put in there, that's public record. And I think we'd have to ask our attorney, what would be considered public record and what wouldn't? And then you redact what isn't, and then at the end of the day, when a ruling is made, then it's all public.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Rathkeb, crowdfunding?
I think we can keep this really, really brief, I believe. If any of you looked at, I think what is the PSBA email from last week, it was a part of the, some districts that have done successful, had some successful crowdfunding to purchase many of the computers for our classrooms or some other items. And I just wanted to get the discussion rolling because I, I didn't want us to, maybe someone saw the idea, ran with it and all of a sudden would take it by surprise that somebody did their crowdfunding for one of our classes and we didn't know about it. So just wanted to bring it out there, I thought maybe the easiest solution would be just if there is an idea to do this, maybe the Blazer Foundation would handle it and we'd be done with it. But just wanted to get it out amongst the board for some possible future, you know, discussion. the board for some possible future, you know, discussion.
Comments or questions?
I appreciate you bringing it up. I think it's an excellent way of the public getting involved in providing financing. I think, you know, we don't want the public being surprised, particularly with the Title IX issue and some other things that have come up in the past, where somebody spontaneously does the crowdfunding, and now we've got a lot of money coming into a situation that we weren't aware of before. So, I don't know how you would educate the public not to do it on their own, but certainly we don't have to accept it, funds that are coming in without, you know, the board approval. But I think that Laser Foundation is an excellent place for that to take place.
Moving on, for the benefit of the public, a member of the public raised the issue of our baseball team's schedule, about how far they're traveling and the time involved, among other things. And Mr. McKnight, I believe, was tasked with coming up with a response to this.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cockle. It was a great question, because it caused us to, let me do that. Ms. Goss put some pieces together we met today. And it's broader than a baseball conversation. It brings out how far we travel in all of our sports, to how efficient can we be, what decisions do we think we can make, to make that efficiency maximize? Because the cost really is about the transportation cost, and how long the bus drivers have, you know, when they go to the, how long the games are, and how long they have to get back. So, as Ms. Goss was giving that, it kind of takes three. There's a criteria model in place for scheduling games. And her first criteria is that, of course, league games, by the number one criteria. The second is proximity and power rating. And then the third piece, the nearest opponent with the mutual interest in play. And so that's the criteria that we currently use to schedule games, and we can certainly have a conversation if that's the criteria we want to use. Also broken down is by who the team has been, 10 mile, 20 mile, 30 mile, 40 mile, 50 mile radius of where we travel. She then added for us in the back, each schedule we scored and where we traveled, how long that distance. There's also the financial calculations that we use with lines and new roads. They send an Excel, and you can just plug in the numbers and it's what costs per game. So, you can, you know, find more fifties, and we can make a determination by the board that we don't want to travel ever any further than this particular radius, and we'll try to make a game happen. Things that we have to consider when we do that is, some of the double A teams, as a party school, when you play a double A game, it doesn't impact the power rating, doesn't matter what the sport, football, baseball, basketball. The more competition you have, the more you can pick up maybe one or two games that have a lower power rate, the less events you have, the less you wanna risk that. So, it will impact, you could go undefeated if you pay at a party school and play all double A teams, the power rating would be so low, you can probably have around 50 or 60 seed, which would affect your ability, where you compete in the playoffs and so forth. So, this is how it's determined. So, thank you, Ms. Goss, for Neilman's effort to put all this together in quick order. And you'll see, we do travel, you know, so there's a couple of games, and then we just, she could not get a game scheduled, so the Wayne Grove game, which is baseball, fortunately was careful ultimately, were not big enough, and that's a crazy distance to travel, and that would be something that would have an extreme cost, and then something we should probably, you know, really strongly consider. And I know she has, sometimes that's the only game you can get. I know one of concerns is what she, you know, what about Twin Valley? Not everybody wants the playoffs. So, we used to have a contract with Valley in baseball, for example, and they no longer wanted to play them. So, you know, different districts are looking at different experience situations outside of the county as well. But we can, you know, if we get a direction that you prefer to go, understanding those neighborhoods, we can think that.
I'm curious as to, I mean, I understand the radius, but concentric circles coming out from a specific point don't really give you a good idea of how long somebody's gonna be sitting on a bus. So, instead of a certain mile radius, I would think it'd be driving time would be the driver in terms of the consideration. I think to Mr. Cockle's email, where he was talking about kids sitting on a bus for an hour, just for an hour and a half one way, I mean, that's, that's a heck of a commitment and ambition to playing the game, you know, you're missing classes, you're not getting home in time to do homework, or, I mean, there's other ramifications to packing a schedule that impact your academic coursework. So, I think my, my concern would be that, you know, if a sports game is going to interfere with a student's ability to do their homework and prepare for a test or something else, I mean, that game's gotta go. And so maybe, maybe what we ought to be doing is with our transportation partners, is creating a different type of map that says, okay, well, look, these locations are X number of minutes away, we're only gonna, we're only gonna participate in games so many minutes from the school district in terms of a drive.
If you, if you go to a game, I think it's seven, they're not numbered, but it's the one that has a little check on it, that actually is the Excel document that calculates, of course, it does include the information you're speaking to. So, Ms. Goss put it on 10 mile, which is how long, you know, where on, how much it takes to get to a given area, and what the cost is. She also put that at the bottom of the schedule, I believe. But yeah, I think your point is still, your point is still the right point. I mean, we have to make a decision on how far we're willing to travel. I think sporting events, as we discussed earlier today, are about three hours, I think it's a fair amount of time to say that it's three hours. And so then your travel time on each event as you go out, because there's also, just aside from the student fees, we get charged from the depot to the school in addition to it. So, there's the cost, and then there's the study time of being lost, which is, is excellent. How many, how many of those games do you wanna have in the schedule? How many couldn't have, or probably wanna have it? We'd like to get, if we have some blanks in our scheduling, I guess the maximum number of competitions we could have, and what do you wanna do about that? We need to make some applied decision.
So, what I'm hearing is the board needs to determine time constraints, mileage constraints, dollar constraints, on where we wanna go.
Maybe something definite to look at is if you have a commitment.
Just a quick question. Is it like not, is it taboo now, play the same team twice in a season? Because I'm looking through the schedule, it looks like we don't really play anybody twice.
Which sport are you looking at?
I looked at the, we play a home and an away game.
Yeah.
That's the away schedule. That's because we only get charged.
Oh, that's true.
It says, that's valid for, well, that's valid for parents at home.
I got you.
Yeah, I mean, aside from, from the one that was canceled, and when I saw they were playing York, I mean, we were going through Burkes County, through Lancaster County, to get to York County to play a game. I mean, that's, that's a hike. So, I mean, there are some things that need to be looked at. Mr. Cockle, this, I hadn't mentioned you, but since you were mentioning, does this answer your question?
And the other other question is the maximum amount of games, like, I still don't understand, like, Twin Valley, that's where your coach teaches. They play 16 games in their season. We play 20. So, you figure, he works there, he should be able to talk to, to his coworker there and say, "Listen, play us, so we don't have to drive that game with you." If you don't get them stuck in traffic or anything, it's two and a half hour drive one way. They were leaving at nine for a 1:30 game. I mean.
Yeah, but that's depending on whether he can convince them to do that, is what you're saying.
Right. But, you know, Exeter is in their condition. They play 16 games. You don't have to max out your, your games. The I W A says you can have no more than 20 games. I think Smithlin is the only one in there that had 20 games along with game two. Everyone else was at 16, 17, and 18 games.
So, Mr. McKnight or Ms. Goss, if we determine a time constraint, as long as that provides you sufficient games, that would be what we need to do?
Yeah, I think that the other caveat is we have to make collective decisions about the power rating piece and what that means. And so you do end up playing, I don't know, every schedule here. I'm sure she can sell her speakers, but ultimately, like, when, just in my aspect back, and I know that sometimes we played more games to get the power rating, because our schedule wasn't as strong, so by playing more games, you increase your rate. Where somebody could have a very strong 16 game schedule, you get the power rating out of 16 games. So, it has a little bit to do with that, for sure.
Well, in the interest of time, rather than be laboring us tonight, if you would, Michelle, send us something that explains the power rating and why it's important, and what the impact on the school district is.
It's in there.
It's in there, yes, okay. So, let us absorb all that, and then in some future meeting, we'll try and come up with some response.
Well, actually, when you need, when are the schedules being formulated for, let's say, the fall?
Right now.
Yeah. They're pretty much already done for the next, this coming year.
So, next fall, next winter, and next spring are already locked in?
Yes. Well, I'm still looking for a few more games for each certain, certain teams, but everything goes on a two-year cycle. So, we, next year is the second year of the two-year cycle, that we're in right now.
Okay, so we really couldn't affect any change really until three years from now, next year.
Next year.
Well, we could.
Are we contracted?
We could change the baseball schedule for next spring.
I think what she's saying is it's already locked in.
I think we're contracted.
Or is that locked in?
As far as the Wayne's Grove game, we, as, I have spoken with their athletic director, and we have come up with a plan that we're either going to play at a venue halfway in between, we're looking at Lebanon Valley College, or we are not gonna play that game at all, we are gonna break the contract that we have, so.
Does that cost us anything?
But our contract runs through when? Next year?
I mean, integrity, but.
Michelle, you said next year is the second year of a two-year contract. When does that end?
It ends at the next, at the next school year spring, we're done with the contracts right now.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, when do you typically set up these schedules and lock in? Is it in August? Is it in May? Is it in February? I mean, I've heard in the past, it was February something date.
You're trying to get, you're trying to get your schedule set up, the two years prior to the next two-year cycle.
Yeah, but in the calendar year, what month of the year do you try to get your schedule set up for the following two-year orders?
As soon as basketball was over this year, I started working on the next two-year cycle.
And that ends at the end of February?
For non-league games, yes.
Okay.
So, like, when the spring schedule season's over, I will start looking at the next two-year cycle for non-league spring games.
Gotcha, okay.
Moving on, Mr. Raskin, if you wanted to. I've got one other thing, if you don't mind. Ms. Goss, can you provide us the coming year's schedule?
I can provide you with what I have now.
Yeah, can you do that? That'd be great, thank you. Mr. Raskin, if you wanted to discuss forming a public member building closure committee?
Yeah, I had brought this up at finance committee, and I did send something out to the board, if anybody had any of my information, not if you had a chance to look at the link or not, but, you know, just a sort of suggestion to try and get as much, you know, feedback as we can, or buy-in, I should say, from the public, because I think we all know that closing a school is a very passionate decision. I think it's a good, a good word from the community. I mean, it's not, I mean, we could, we could say it's just a building, but it's more than that to, to a lot of folks in the community. So, my hope was to try and form an outside committee that, that could be made up of, as I said to the, to the finance committee, maybe it's folks that are in the business community, maybe some, you know, folks from the local municipalities, maybe some retired educational folks, and maybe some clergy. But, you know, from different, different points of view and different backgrounds, so that we have a broad makeup of this committee to try and get a valuable and insightful opinion as to if we should close a school, and what schools should be, and so they can make a, take a valid recommendation to this, to this board, as to go through this whole process. Instead of, I guess, the board, you know, going through the process and coming up with a recommendation that we're gonna get a lot of pushback on, I'm hoping that by committing development, you know, we'd like us more buy-in overall from the entire community.
Comments or questions?
Mr. Raskin, I really liked the suggestion. I appreciate your research on that. I think that if we formed a policy, we created a new policy in the policy committee that was based on sort of like the vacancy rate trigger, when vacancy rates get to a certain occupancy versus, right, vacancy, am I saying that right? Then it sort of triggers the creation of that, of our committee.
Are we talking about the role of enrollment?
Right, exactly, exactly, enrollment. Which, all these things that we talked about before, this could kind of tie it all together. We have a policy on the books that says, when it comes from, you know, administration has issued it, certain, you know, sort of enrollment members, and your capacity rates are, you know, starting to indicate that there is some vacancy there that triggers the formation of a, of a committee, and we're forward with it, doing a full investigation. But that's my suggestion where it belongs.
I think my only comment is, just my experience is sitting on some of these committees, the bigger they get, the more difficult it is to get a consensus and get a decision and a recommendation to the board. And I don't want this to be a, in my mind, it's a decision that should be driven by the educational requirements of the school district, not whether somebody wants a particular, you know, building open in their neighborhood. And so for me, it should be driven by the administration, providing the information and recommendations to the board based on enrollment and budget constraints and all the other different things that go into it. The administration's gonna say, "Well, look, you know, with the declining enrollment, some of the work we've already charged them to, this is the best model to provide a quality education to our kids. And within that model, given the resources that we have, you know, this building should be closed." And that may go in juxtaposition to whatever a committee of community leaders may want, you know, municipal leaders may want a building open or may want it closed, for whatever their reasons are, zoning or something else, or traffic.
Well, I guess my point is, I, if it was that, if it was that easy a decision and logic would dictate, it would be an easy decision. But I think when it comes down to this, if logic goes out the window on issues like this, so that's why I'm kind of hoping that maybe getting buy-in from the, from the public will help with that.
I don't disagree with, with the intent. I think what you're trying to accomplish is.
And maybe, you know, maybe the, maybe the hurdle is, you know, is discussing, what's the makeup? And is it, is it six members, is it eight, is it, is it 20? You know, maybe that's where we're gonna have, have the issues. And yet, having we, having we formed the committee is probably the big hurdle.
I think for me, though, well, two things, I'll just finish my thought. I think, like I said before, I think it's administration-driven. I think that the, ultimately, the board, the nine people sit here, represent the public, in my opinion. And, you know, 20,000 people have the opportunity to vote and choose who's going to represent them on the board and to make selections of, and make decisions like this. And, and that happens every two years. Whereas a committee is handpicked by a board, and, you know, typically, you're gonna get people who represent special interests are the ones who are gonna volunteer. And so you, I think there's a bias that can be created in terms of selecting these types of committees. And then I just, I'm curious as to how the committee is going to provide the best decision that meets the academic and, you know, needs of the school. It's, as you said, they're making an emotional one based on a variety of other issues as opposed to the logical one. I think it's our job up here, the administration's job, to make a logical decision, not an emotional.
I don't disagree with the bias at all. And that's, you know, the other piece is, you know, it needs to be open and transparent, you know, how, how these members are selected, and then who do we approach. But obviously, they would be, you know, assisted and guided by administration with their input as far as, you know, what we're directing them now to, you know, follow the study, et cetera, build school, you know. So, obviously, administrations want to be providing the information, so.
I just wonder if a town hall might be a better forum to create buy-in? I mean, if that's the goal, is to create buy-in, is.
Well, technically, we have to have a town hall, because we have to have a.
We have to have a public hearing eventually, but.
I mean, there's, there's processes in place already that we have to follow. I'm just wondering how the, how those pros- I'm just wondering how those processes that are already in place, how that would dovetail with what you're suggesting.
Well, the process in place is that, you know, Mr. Small and Mrs. Torsho are guiding the administration to, you know, basically gather information for their input, which is at least a year out or a year and a half. So, I think time is still there to, if we want to put a committee in place, I think we can still do that.
My concern would be, and Mr. Maisel said it here, you have nine members that are elected to make the decision. So, you put a committee together, and the committee, for whatever reason, a motion, whatever determines that AEC should be closed. And the board looks at the data and says, AEC can't be closed because it's the largest elementary school we have. So, thank you for your recommendation, but we're not going to do what you suggested. We're going to do what we decided anyway. So, where does that leave the feeling among the public about how much input they really have?
A distinct possibility, doesn't it? But obviously, hopefully, the administration would give them valid information that says you can't close it. If that's the scenario that you're going to play for. But yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it's a perfect solution or answer to the issue, but...
It's a consideration of, if you read chapter three, it says, "Based upon the expanded school closure committee's analysis and conclusion, the superintendent will make a recommendation to the board." And their analysis includes things that we wouldn't build into our equation, aesthetics, neighborhoods, transportation. They're just doing the analysis for us, you know? They're doing it one step in addition to what the administration has provided. I think if you read through this, you'd be pleasantly surprised. And I don't think it would interfere with anything else we're trying to do. It's just a recommendation based on a really good analysis and input from our community, which many of us ran on, and that's what we're supposed to be trying to do, is incorporate the community into these decisions.
Other comments or questions?
I would have been a problem if a committee was together, where members of the community were going to discuss this and maybe bring to light different issues that may exist. But at the end of the day, the decision needs to be the board's. And I, speaking as one work member, would not feel at all beholden to a decision of a committee when I was elected to represent...
Yeah, that's the whole...
I think that's all we're saying.
Committees, you're making recommendations. Obviously, just, let's take all committees.
Yeah, that is just another component.
I think if you're going to have a committee, I think a better, maybe a better purpose of a committee rather than deciding what school to close or whether a school should or not, would be to discuss the potential pitfalls of closing a building and how we can solve them. I mean, a couple of months ago, when we talked about it, we had parents come in here and said, "Well, did you think about this? Or did you think about that? Or I walked into this school and..." And those are things that we may not know because we're not in every classroom every day. And, but, like I said before, all these, all these problems can be worked through if people work together. If something's going to happen, it's going to happen. So, you can do it the hard way and everybody can be miserable, or everybody can work together to come up with the best solution for the community. And so, maybe the committee should be more focused on what are the potential problems if we close X or if we close Y, and how do we solve them?
I like that. And if we go with that approach, it can be open to anybody, anybody who wants to come and discuss these things. It can go, it doesn't need to be a formal membership of the committee. It can be pretty much an open dialogue among members of the community about how to solve these problems associated with potential building closure. And I don't know if the expression might spirit that.
Isn't that a town hall?
Well, it wouldn't be. Well, I mean, town hall, they're asking the board questions. In this case, they're discussing among themselves, and the recommendations would come forward to the board, I guess, or their concerns and solutions. I don't know. I think that's a good idea.
But yeah, we have a year and a half, so, yeah, we can have further discussion on this.
Okay. Sounds great. Moving on, I'm going to do items M and N at the same time. The combined proposals for about $3,700 are for the graduation sound system and video streaming. And if I'm not mistaken, these are the same companies we used last year.
Yes, they are.
At about the same price.
Yes.
Comments or questions?
We've got a lot of good, we've got a lot of good comments back from, from the people who graduated last year. In contrast, stark contrast with the complaints and how horrible two years ago was, or actually, three years ago. How bad it was with the echo, and it was just terrible. And the thing is, these parents, including me, only have one opportunity to see my child graduate from my school. I'd like to actually have the people be able to hear who's being called, the presenters and speakers. I think it's important.
There were a lot of people that did go on to watch the streaming as well. I think Connor was one of them because he was not here in the country even, so...
These things can be such a distraction that they could truly take away from the whole day. We just shouldn't have people, you know, thinking about, even thinking about things like this at a time like this, if they can't hear.
Okay.
I thought you were going to do...
Nobody was sure where you were going.
Sorry, I mean, you know.
You know, graduates.
They shouldn't be put out by such tiny things.
The feedback was very positive, and we, we will vote on that in the next meeting. The next item was about an Island Pizza fundraiser that I don't know if this person emailed the entire board, but they asked me to keep this anonymous, so I will. But I'll have Mrs. Kramer send this out to the entire board. The fundraiser is called the Blazer Tap Takeover at Island Pizza.
Yeah, I already have tickets, so we can bear fruit.
Well, no, I just wanted to say that the person's complaint, I don't have a feeling about this one way or another. I told the person I'd bring it up to the board. Hello, I wanted to inquire if the Daniel Boone Sports Boosters need approval from the school board to do events for the school's benefit. If so, I'd also like to inquire if it's felt to be entirely appropriate to hold such an event in a local bar. These events are supposed to benefit students, and I found it very poor taste to do so upon seeing a posting. In regards to an event to be held on April 26th at Island Pizza called the Blazer Tap Takeover, this is promoting a school committee. How this is acceptable when the over 700 Daniel Boone High School and Middle School athletes are under legal drinking age? As I said, it was just an inquiry, as I do not know what protocol is on what needs to be approved by the board and what is not. Attached to the posting of, a photo of the posting I saw. Thank you for your time and consideration. I will say that, and most of you know, I have a granddaughter living in our house. We've taken her to Island Pizza since she was old enough to chew salad food, so I don't know that that's an issue. I mean, it's a restaurant that also has a liquor license. But I didn't know the answers to these questions. Does the board need to approve booster benefits? What are booster benefits? Well, the fundraising, we need to approve the fundraising.
It's held off district property.
And they weren't using school, then there was no inquiry to certainly, I wouldn't have allowed that to go home in the Tuesday folders.
Okay, so the answer is, this is independent of the school district and we did not...
If you need a ticket, I have some.
I need to answer this person, so, so the answer is, we did not have to vote on it. Is that correct?
No, I think the only thing, maybe when Mr. Subers is around here and at the next meeting, just ask about, you know, the use of the Blazer name and, you know...
And Daniel Boone.
But a lot of people are using, like, even our Blazer, one of the Blazer foot, the younger kids, they use that and they have different types of fundraisers or that...
Yeah, but they're not necessarily associated with alcohol or tobacco.
Some of the things that they're, like, beef and beer things and, yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, I just remember that we had an issue, I think it was with the golf outings a couple of years ago, where alcohol was being served and it was a problem, and the board said, "No more." And, you know, that was a while back, but we said we didn't want it being affiliated with the district anymore. So, because of liability issue and everything else, and there's, I think there was some underage drinking going on there too. So, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily have an issue with this. I just want to make sure that we're not tearing ourselves up for some other problem.
So, we'll bring it up to Mr. Subers.
Was it booster, the proceeds benefited one of our school sanction boards?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I didn't hear who benefited from it.
For the sports boost.
Yeah, any good fundraising policy would not, would prohibit that. And that's, we're supposed to be working on the fundraising policy.
Well, but I agree with, Mr. Subers should be here at the next meeting. We'll ask him his opinion on this.
Right, but it could also be handled through our policy, which we're going to be working on fundraising policy. And we've done a lot of research.
That's not done yet?
We've got some work to do with the booster policy.
If that being tied with the finance guy, he's blocking it out.
All right. Moving on to the last item that I'm aware of, Mrs. Torsho wanted to discuss the Odyssey of the Mind team.
Right, so that I'm, we're not doing this at the 11th hour, since we know that they're going to be going to Michigan in May, at the end of May, May 20th, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. And what the board has done in the past was, they have paid for the team registration, which is $2,400. And they have given stipends for lodging and food. And what I will do is, I will lay that out on the voting meeting agenda, exactly what the cost would be. What, because I, without, I have it archived somewhere. But they also threw something else in, and that was that they're not flying to Michigan, they're driving. And part of what the Odyssey of the Mind does is its props, and the props are large. And I don't know if there's anyone here that participated. So, they, they need a van. So, they were asking if the school district would help or pay for van rental. They said it would be approximately $423. I also did give that to Blazer Foundation because they did give a contribution towards OM last year to help defray, defer some of their costs. And I know that they'll do fundraising as well to help. So, I just wanted to know if the board would be interested in, I told them I'd ask in that new additional cost.
And that's the van?
Yeah, and that's the van. Because they can't, they can't take the kids in the vehicles that they're trying to, you know, downsize.
How did they get the stuff out there last year?
They sent it, they mailed it out, which was very costly. Yes, they shipped it out. And, and then they have to reassemble it when it gets there. And so, they're just looking at this as being the most, again, I'm bringing it to you so you can...
Kind of a van, I'm talking about one of those 15 dangerous passenger vans?
She said a van, um, we currently have an estimate for van rental. This, um, she didn't go into...
Those are just passengers. I think they're like the most deadliest, even if they go out.
She didn't say what type of van. I thought that she did mention it, but she did not.
So, maybe they're talking about cargo vans, someone's driving it.
Right. They're going to rent it and from somewhere, I still have...
Don't have much of a problem with that.
They'll, they'll rent, yeah.
That's what I was saying, but is there a school resource they would use, like the music instructor around?
I don't know if they would be able to for that long time.
They have a trailer in it.
The question was about using the marching band van?
Yeah, that's what we were just talking about.
Okay, so that could be an option, maybe? But then you'd have to see who's driving it and...
Maybe look at that option or look it up.
The only, the only advantage of it is, as I tell you on the screen, it said, going long distance without a swivel is not fun.
So, I can put...
You don't have a cost for it for the next meeting.
I can put all the costs on it and you can vote out which one, right?
Okay. Other comments or questions? Any presentations by the public on any issues?
New website, I hope it puts the agenda out, passes in the data, the, and H, and the NRA went out on that rifle thing? On H, the NRA went out on the rifle?
I had no idea what you're asking about the NRA.
No, the logo, the rifle, the logo. The NRA, did NRA went out? Is it going to be back with the logo, the rifle?
I don't know where the NRA enters into it.
Well, that's what basically it looked like here. Is the rifle going to be back with the logo, or is that what the other?
We haven't decided that yet.
I would advise, I would advise, don't put it back on. I think we've done without this fault. We don't need it back on. And, you know, why are we even thinking about having our children in any atmosphere of tobacco or alcohol? What, are we crazy? What are you, what's wrong, what's wrong? Why are we even thinking about that? They shouldn't be anywhere around that. We're encouraging that? Oh, that's no way. And the NRA thing, you talk about the Roman, yeah, let's get down Roman. You know, remember Mr. Hollis used to have Lincoln Building in Roosevelt? Mr. Whitehead continued disability and bankruptcy, two criticals for elementary buildings because they were wrong. And we had one superintendent, no assistant, no, we had one assistant, no assistant. You want to get, let's get down to this, why, you know, we're not in Roman, why is all this, all this administration rocket Roman story out here? I remember back, back about six, seven years ago, down in Philly's school, they got rid of one administrator and saved 15 supportive states. Oh, that's right, administrators, so they, they, they just do the tax, like, we're on borders, like, yeah.
Cindy McGee, 101 North Spur Street, Spur Street, Pennsylvania. I just had a few comments. First of all, I think the idea of forming a public committee when the, the closing of schools is a good idea. First of all, I didn't elect six of you. I don't have that option. So, six of you, I have no say about. I have no input. And really, you don't have to represent my interests because you're not from my district. So, please stand pacify me by saying that I'm represented by all of you, because I'm really not. I'm represented by three of you. As far as a public committee, no, I don't think that they have to have a final decision. But I think something like you have a consumer focus group, you could have several committees. It's a rolling process to have input because they, there are different people who have different experiences in the building that you're not going to possibly be able to have, which was adequately said by a few people on this board, which was appreciated. So, I think maybe something like that. We don't have to have one committee. Why don't we have several that have input throughout the year as to their experience and what they find valuable or not valuable? Yeah, we have our own agendas, but you do too. You can't tell me that you're not coming to this table with something else in mind, with some interest, something like sports, something like band, okay? So, let's not pretend like it's not that public comment has to be a pure comment. It's got to be biased. It has to be biased. It's going to point out things that you can't possibly know. And I think that would be a valuable experience. The second thing I just wanted to say is, I can appreciate when some of the people did come up here and say things that, you know, it was an accusation. Quite frankly, my kid only goes through sixth grade once. This year, he goes through ninth grade once. When someone comes up and calls you to task, I know it's, I know it's belaboring, and I know that you work hard and that the issues are complex, but we're striving to understand it too. And if we're calling you to task to make my kid's only sixth grade year the best that it's going to be, there's an answer that has to come back, not a defensive accusation. I don't have time to come spend till 11 o'clock every night. I just got done Borough Council. I mean, like, we're all busy, and you guys are too. I get that. But I'm just saying, I can't appreciate that it's called an accusation, because people have valid points. And just a last comment is, I'm not sure, because I really couldn't see anywhere documented, but why did we change the school year to be so late in September? Like, where did that decision come from? For, since we moved in here, we were before Labor Day. All of a sudden, last year, here we are after Labor Day, and now we are like September 8th to start the new school year. I mean, quite frankly, are we going to go, I mean, are we going to be up into school into August? I mean, what's the whole point of that? And maybe there is a reason. I'm not, that's not an accusation. That's a comment. That's a, that's a, something I've noticed. Observation, I think, is more appropriate. So, maybe if there may be some input or on how that decision was made, why it's made, and to see if maybe there's any feedback that you've got, more parents like it or don't like it. I personally don't like it. I think it puts us into this, to this whole snow day thing where we're, if we have to make up snow days, we're way into the summer. That's just a comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Other comments or questions, Mr. Coughlin?
Yes, this is my comment, again, about the sports. First, I think Michelle is doing an excellent job. My email was more to point out that I think coaches need to be a little more aware about the financial stress that's on our district and how much has been sacrificed. about the financial stress that's on our district and how much has been sacrificed so they can continue to play their, their game, compete in sports, have fun and have a great experience. Uh, there's a, a huge price tag with that. And I think the coaches have to understand that they might not be able to get all their PowerPoints, but they're gonna be able to play a season. And if they have to, you know, Berks Catholic plays 18 games this year. They're always going into playoffs in districts, they're, they're a very good team. I think the coaches really need to understand, you know, what has been sacrificed for them to play. My email is nothing bad against Michelle, I think she's doing an excellent job. And I understand how difficult it is to, to do middle school and high school with all the sports and all the parents, and how much free time that she commits on her own. I just wanted to point that out, thanks.
Thank you. Seeing another public comment, I'd like to remind the board, the board members will have an executive session in a room behind us. And Miss Hefter, could I see you for one second after the meeting? Motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Kurtz, signed by Mr. Wolf.